Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to go ahead and have today's meeting Tuesday, December 20th. This is our afternoon session and we'll come back at seven to complete the council agenda. And with that, we'll go ahead and start off with a roll called Clementine.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here. Thanks. And I'll bounce it back to you Clementine to do the announcement of how we conduct our meetings for public comments.
Wonderful. Thank you. For our in-person attendance here in the council chamber so that everyone remains safe, masks are required for all who attend in person regardless of vaccination status, except those who are younger than two or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. Please keep your phones and devices muted in order to prevent audio interference. And there are two ways to virtually participate in today's meeting. You may join us using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. An up-to-date version of the Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864, then enter meeting ID 1607729333, and if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine, and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak, and I'll call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that is established, and a countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you are connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. And today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay, and on Comcast Channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay, and we look forward to receiving your public comments.
Beautiful. Thanks Clementine. And then we'll go ahead and just kick the meeting off with the presentation that we have, which every quarter, the city council hears milestones and careers from city employees and those that are retiring. So we'll pass it to, I believe Nat here to kick this off. And I'm just happy to hear this. I'll just say that I think this provides us in the public a great opportunity to better understand the type of work that's done within the city of Monterey. So I would just ask, when we're passing it around to the various managers, if you could help describe the duties in which these individuals do to help give context to the public.
Thank you, Mayor Williamson and members of the council. Appreciate your comments, Mayor Tyler. The, you know, our employees, we're all in the people business and deliver outstanding services to the community. Our city team is over 400 full-time members strong, full-time staff strong. And we do appreciate every quarter being able to present to council and recognize employees for their outstanding service to the community, both in terms of those who are retiring as well as those who have upcoming anniversaries with the city. And we'll start off with milestone anniversaries recognizing this quarter. And after each presentation, we do have a letter from our city manager, Hans Uslar, thanking them for their service, as well as a special pin that we provide to each employee that recognizes them specifically for the milestone years. And the first employee on our city team recognizing this this afternoon is Nate Cota. He is our recreation supervisor with the Parks and Recreation Department. He's celebrating 20 years of service with the city of Monterey. And he is not only a supervisor overseeing a number of community centers, but is also in charge primarily of the programs and services at El Estero Park Center that many of you are familiar with located at El Estero Park. I've had the privilege of working with him. He's served as a logistics chief in our EOC, Emergency Operations Center during the early days of COVID and the COVID-19 pandemic. He has led and literally thousands of meals distributed to the food through the food bank at El Estero Park every single day for nearly a year in 2020 during during the pandemic, among other projects. And to introduce Nate, or to say a few words about Nate Cota is our Parks and Recreation Director, Karen Larson, who I believe is joining us remotely. Karen?
Good afternoon, Mayor Williamson and council members. I apologize that my camera does not see me working, and I've been struggling with it. So I apologize for that. But I'd love to say that we have the great pleasure of having Nate Cota on our recreation team for over 20 years. In 2002, Nate started out as a part-time recreation leader, and he quickly demonstrated a friendly demeanor, strong work ethic, and a dedication to customer service. Later that year, he was promoted to a 30-hour recreation specialist at El Estero Park Center. And there, he developed a great rapport with city staff, contractual instructors, and nonprofit group representatives. He also bonded with the center's teen population. Nate understood the importance of providing safe, fun, and nurturing programs for children and adults as well. And he proved to be industrious and creative by always offering new ideas for enhancing existing programs and events. He also displayed his leadership talents and was soon able to fill in for the community center director in their absence. In 2004, Nate was promoted to a full-time position as a community center director at El Estero Park Center, which eventually evolved into a recreation coordinator position. By this time, Nate was the consummate recreation professional. He not only had a great rapport with the center staff and program participants, but he also worked closely with Monterey Peninsula Unified School District employees from Colton Middle School and Monterey High School to offer teen programs such as babysitting and CPR first aid training, school dances, and fifth quarter. For those of you who don't know, fifth quarter was an event where high school students could go after every Friday night home football game. So throughout the years, he built and sustained fun and creative programs for people of all ages. For tots three to five years old, there was preschool, dance classes, Monday morning stories and adventures, morning art awakening, and jump, wiggle, twirl, and giggle, and more. For school-aged children, there was gymnastics, chess, woodworking, fencing, Lego and robotics camps, Minecraft camp, and all kinds of dance classes such as tap, jazz, hip hop, modern, and even hula. For adults, there was an array of programs from flamenco dancing and Scottish country dancing, to joy of singing vocal lessons, to CPR and AED training. And Nate did all of this while still working closely with nonprofit organizations and member of the public to offer meetings and private parties at the center. And he continued to provide good leadership to the center staff, including contractual instructors, preschool instructors, desk attendants, and recreation leaders. But his leadership didn't stop there. Nate has really stepped up to be a leader citywide, especially during the pandemic when there was limited employees and a strong need for support. Nate's leadership skills, positive attitude, calm demeanor, and dedication to service make him the perfect fit to support the city's Emergency Operations Center, or EOC. His flexibility, knowledge of the city, and deep connections to personality why also enabled him to support EOC operations with ease. And throughout the pandemic, Nate has been a cornerstone of our department by not only representing Parks and Recreation in the EOC, but also supporting much-needed services such as blood drugs, food distribution, and vaccination clinics. So whether it's gathering supplies, preparing a shelter for local wildfire evacuees, coordinating with the American Red Cross to bolster local blood supplies, directing volunteers and traffic to deliver essential food to those in need, or providing support to organizations to distribute crucial vaccinations to the public, Nate does it all, and he does it with a smile. In September 2021, Nate was promoted to recreation supervisor. And so now, he not only still runs the operations at El Estero Park Center, but he also assists the recreation manager with multiple community centers, citywide special events such as the Fourth of July Celebration, as well as field sports and activities such as youth flag football and adult softball league, and summer programs like Camp Kimsabe Overnight Camp and Whispering Pines Day Camp. I really cannot state how fortunate we are to have Nate on our team. We're all so proud of him, and I'd like to congratulate Nate on 20 years of exceptional service. Clapping, clapping.
And we know Nate is, he actually initially did not want to even be recognized tonight because he's quite humble, and so he's not able to make it tonight, but we will definitely share the letter and the pin with him. And thank you. Our next presentation will be recognizing also for 20 years of service, Jeff Glass. He is our Streets and Utilities Supervisor with the Public Works Department. And we've had the privilege of working with him in the city manager's office on a number of projects. I would not hesitate to call him one of our most responsive and hardworking employees. And to introduce Jeff and talk a little bit about Jeff is our Public Works Director Andrea Rennie. Thank you, Andrea.
We can't hear Andrea online.
Kenny Harmon now?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
So Mayor Williamson, congratulations. And Councilmember Barber and Gino, welcome and congratulations as well. Councilmember Smith, congratulations on your reelection. And good to see you, Councilmember Hoffa. So it is my privilege to be here celebrating 20 years of having Jeff Glass working for the city. One of the interesting facts is when Jeff first started on December of 2002, he was not the only Glass in the city family. His dad was actually the fire chief back then. So working for the city does run in the family, and we're very lucky to have Jeff. I don't think I've ever heard Jeff say no. He always has an attitude of yes, how can we get there? And how can we get creative? And how can we get this done? So he started out as a street maintenance worker, and he progressed to senior street maintenance worker. He also had a couple of special assignments. One of them was running our fleet. So he had a special assignment as fleet coordinator. And he also ran the street sweeper. So he was a street sweeper operator for a while. Now, then Jeff went to becoming a sign craft worker, which I have to admit, I'm very jealous because I think it's one of the coolest jobs in the city. So you put the craft in the craft worker, and you get to be creative. And if you have the chance, I highly recommend going to 27 Ryan Ranch to the courtyard and looking at the sign shop. Eric will give you a tour, and it's just, it's just a great place. It's very fun. So he was a sign craft worker for a while, and then he became Streets and Utilities Supervisor, which is his current position. And he does a fantastic job running the streets crews. He works very closely with the other supervisor, Ethan, and the two of them do a fantastic job with our crews. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank the streets crews for keeping us safe every day. And they did a fantastic job preparing for the storm. They worked during the storm and after the storm. So I want to take this opportunity to thank them as well. And Jeff has really done everything in streets. He's done the jobs that are not glamorous, but necessary, like opening blocks to remains, and the jobs that we think are fun, like creating nice and wonderful signs that you see. So anytime you drive around, look at signs, most of them were probably procured or made by Jeff. And I just want to say, it is such a privilege to have him with the city. And thank you so much, Jeff, and congratulations on your 20 years.
Now is Jeff present? Did we get to hear from him?
He is not here today, but we'll extend. He'll, I'm sure, be watching the council meeting after.
So we should, we should set up a thing where if they're not able to make it today, that they have to follow up at the following council meeting to hear from them. No pressure. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last, but not least, milestone anniversary is recognizing Officer Chad Ventimiglia for his 20 years of service as well. And I don't think I've seen Chad on any motor vehicle except for the electric bike that we recently provided him. He's actually the epitome of community policing. I think we always see him out in the field engaging with our community members on the rec trail and other places around town. And to introduce Officer Ventimiglia and recognize him is our Chief of Police, David Hober.
Thank you, Nat. Can you hear me? All right, Mayor Williamson and council. Good afternoon. As Nat said, I'm Dave Hober, your Chief of Police. It's truly my honor to be able to talk about Chad today. Like Mr. Glass, Chad is a second-generation City of Monterey employee from the Fire Department. And so Chad, I spoke to yesterday. He's not able to be here today because he had a family commitment, but he was excited to be recognized and related that he would watch with his family. So Chad, if you're watching, thank you for everything that you've done. I'm going to read from a plaque that we're going to give to Chad. The Monterey Police Department takes great pride in recognizing Monterey Police Officer Chad Ventimiglia, badge number 107, on the occasion of his 20 years of service to the city of Monterey. Monterey Police Department Officer Chad Ventimiglia, number 107, has been an integral part of the City of Monterey Police Department for the past 20 years, from July 2002 through present. Officer Ventimiglia started with the City of Monterey as a police officer trainee in July 2002. He graduated from the Basic Police Academy and became a police officer in December of 2002. During his tenure, Officer Ventimiglia has worked as a patrol officer, a field training officer, an auxiliary field training officer, and a detective assigned to investigations and the Prevent Task Force. Officer Ventimiglia is currently assigned to the Community Action Team. Officer Ventimiglia is a second-generation City of Monterey Public Safety Professional. Chad's father, Mike Ventimiglia, retired from the Monterey Fire Department. Officer Ventimiglia was a 2003 and 2004 Monterey Police Department Officer of the Year, and was recognized in 2006 with a Distinguished Service Award, and in 2020 with a Meritorious Service Award. Officer Ventimiglia leads by example in exhibiting professionalism, service, integrity, hard work, and commitment to the law enforcement profession. The City of Monterey Police Department thanks Officer Ventimiglia for his great sense of humor and dedication to our community for the past 20 years. And with that, I'll just end by saying that Chad, being an officer for 20 years, pushing a beat car, as Nat said, riding an electric bike, or walking the beat, or whatever it is, there's a lot to be said for somebody who stays at the rank of police officer. It's a hard job, and to continue in that job, working the street, is something to really be appreciated. So I very much appreciate Chad and his family for sharing him with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, on to retirements this year. And to kick us off, we'll ask Community Development Director, Kim Cole, to come up to the podium. We're recognizing Paul Abadilla, our Senior Building Inspector, for over 33 years of service to the city of Monterey. That's quite an achievement. And many of you can, I'm sure, appreciate the outstanding work the Building Division Team does to keep our buildings safe. And I'll just share with you, over 1,800 building and construction permits in one year alone this past year in the Building Division. And Paul was a big part of that. So Kim, take it away.
So Paul, if you can please come up. It's my honor to recognize Paul Abadilla for 33 years of service to the city of Monterey. He has been the cornerstone of our Building Department and Inspection Services during his tenure here. And I think if you look at almost any major facility in the city of Monterey, Paul has been our inspector on that facility. And some of the most recent buildings I can think of, the Monterey Conference Center, the medical buildings out at Two Upper Reggsdale, including the Breast Care Center. And I know you were even out today at the Ohana site, which will be an adolescent mental health facility over 40,000 square feet in size. In the last several years, Paul is, was promoted from Building Inspector to Senior Building Inspector, where he served as a mentor to the other inspectors in the office, and took them out on those very complicated inspections and teaching them how to approach, you know, a 40,000-square-foot building. Where do you start when you start looking at mechanical systems? And how do you dissect that and work through that inspection? On a personal level, I'm going to miss you so much, and I wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
Thank you, Kim. And we have this pin for Paul. We'll share with him after the meeting. Okay. And then the final recognition tonight is recognizing Doug Phillips, the General Manager for the Monterey Conference Center. As some of you are aware, most of you are aware, the Conference Center is truly the cornerstone for hospitality in the city of Monterey and serves as a major economic engine for the number one industry in our, in our community. And it is operated by the city. Just last year alone, over $1.3 million in TOT, the transient occupancy tax, was generated by hotel room nights booked due to functions at the Conference Center. And leading the Conference Center team for the past six, over six years, has been Doug Phillips. Doug came to us from the Monterey Plaza Hotel and Spa, where he spent over six years as the Executive Assistant Manager and Director of Sales and Marketing. He has quite a storied career in hospitality, working at Squaw Creek Resort, Village Property Management in Hawaii, and other locations throughout the country. And we're very grateful of his expertise and his partnership, building relationships with community members. And as we said earlier, coordinating efforts at the Conference Center and supporting the team. Over the last couple of years, some of the most notable activities and events and programs that he's led at the Conference Center include the TED Conference in 2021, which was hosted here. It was hosted at the Conference Center back in the early 80s. It's actually the birthplace of the TED Conference. And when they chose to come back to Monterey, Doug helped make it happen. He also helped and worked on bringing forward hybrid meetings, trying to find out, how do we reutilize the meeting space at the Conference Center during the height of the pandemic, achieving the Global BioRisk Council certifications for the Conference Center, and then annual events such as the Panetta Lecture Series, which we host with the Panetta Institute based on the former Ford O尔d. What, what is also notable beyond the hospitality services that the Conference Center has provided is Doug's care and appreciation for the community and the services outside of that. In 2020, when we, as Monterey County, were experiencing the River Fire, the Carmel Fire, as well as the Dolan Fire in Big Sur, Doug worked with FEMA, and the Conference Center turned into an evacuation center with over 200 beds, available cuts, and, and site where individuals who were displaced and evacuated could come and learn about resources regionally and provided by the federal government. So I personally will miss working with Doug. He's been such a great asset to the team and someone who we rely on deeply. And we know that his Conference Center staff is here in the audience as well to thank him and recognize him for his service. So thank you, Doug, for everything you've done for the city. And we have, I'll be up here to present you with the pin.
And to get to hear a few words from Doug, I think it'd be wonderful to let all the skeletons out of the closet now that he's leaving the city. No, but really, thank you, Doug, for all your years of service. And please take the mic if you'd be so willing.
Well, I don't have, is this on?
It's on.
I don't have anything prepared. I wasn't expecting this. But first of all, congratulations, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just want to commend the city of Monterey for pushing forward the renovation of the Conference Center. Just a phenomenal asset of the cities. Personally, I've never liked my recognition, because it's really not about me and the things that Nat mentioned. And thank you. It's about my team, and I have such an awesome team. They're the ones that put me up and make me look good. And I'm just so blessed to have such a great team. When I first came here to Monterey in 1998, as a kid, I came here many, many times from the Bay Area. I started to appreciate just what a great facility we have here, what a, what a great, I'm sorry, destination we have here. Not just the beauty of Monterey, the climate, but the culture. We are so lucky to be here, living here. And, and I feel so blessed to have had the opportunity to run the Monterey Conference Center for the last six and a half years. So thank you all. And, and I look forward to seeing you in my more casual attire.
So Doug, does that mean you're staying in the area? Did they catch him?
And back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all. And I think Doug kind of-
I think Councilmember Barber might have a comment, or perhaps an audio issue?
No, I was just saying, I don't think they heard him. He was asking the gentleman whether he was staying in the area or not. And I don't think it was heard.
No.
Yes, I believe, I believe he's staying here in Carmel.
I have no plans to leave Monterey. As Nat mentioned, I have lived and worked throughout the country. Places like Aspen was 10 years in Hawaii, East Coast, West Coast, and points between. And there is no greater destination than the city of Monterey. So I'm not leaving this place, except in a box, I guess, as they say.
Well, and I just, I'll put on for the record that we didn't pay you to say that, right?
No, absolutely not.
Thank you. Or maybe we did on salary. No, thank you, Doug. Thanks for your years of service. And thanks to everybody that was recognized today, whether we're celebrating a milestone or retirement. Again, it's a celebratory moment. And as you were saying, Doug, I imagine that you and the rest of the individuals that were recognized today are trying to be modest and humble, because you don't want to make it about yourself. But that's what's so great about this opportunity is, you know, we get to celebrate you all and the great work that you all are doing in our, in our communities. I mean, this is a public service. So thank you all. I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak in the chambers?
I don't see anyone coming forward in the chamber. We do have somebody on Zoom who would like to speak, so I'll call, let Esther Malkin go ahead. And then it looks like someone is coming forward in the chamber. Actually, why don't you come forward? We can do the Zoom right after.
I'll let you handle the public comment, Clementine.
Okay. I'm Don Williams. Some of them, I haven't been here last two years in city council. I was born and raised here in this town at Monterey Hospital. I've seen what this town used to be like, with the cannes running and Alvarado, two-lane road, narrow streets. And right now, mainly I ride bicycle. For eight years, since 2008, I picked up trash in this town here. And, and people know me. They even call me the mayor. They even call me the mayor of Monterey too. And uh, cause uh, all the sheiks know me down in the wharf and uh, uh, the the people that run the bike trail, really crowded bike trail. Uh, I run uh, bicycle quite a bit in Monterey. And um, I help out some of the veteran homeless veterans too. And and um, the bike trail is getting really crowded with uh, pedestrians that uh, won't respect the bicycles or, thank you. Anyway, go get their hot chocolate. Uh, they uh, they won't respect the bicycles e- in either direction. And when they walk on their, the the, the people walk three, four people side by side. And um, you ask them to move over and they wanna argue with you. And um, like uh, you need signs where people could read the where to walk, cause you're supposed to walk off to the right side of the bike trail on pedestrians. And um, and they don't do that. And then uh, yes, the baby carriages too, they have two, sometimes three wide across the bike trail. And uh, the four-wheel buggies that they rent down here too. You get some kids in those things and they do like fifteen, twenty miles an hour on the bike trail. And they try to run the people off the bike trail. And uh, you have to get out here and see what's going on here. And when it gets crowded down there by the custom house, they uh, they ride wheelies too, the kids do. And right through the crowd of people, and that should be a no-no also. So, that's why you should have somebody down there and uh, either an officer down there all the time or not to patrol that area. So, okay. Other than that, I guess my time's up. I got a lot more than that.
Thank you, sir. And feel feel free to leave your uh, public, uh, your your contact information with staff if you'd like some follow-up on some of the concerns that you've expressed.
There anyone else in the chamber? Okay, then in that case, I will call on Esther on Zoom.
Good afternoon, everybody. So nice to see the new council and their first council meeting as a new uh, face for the city. Um, I just wanted to chime in on the kudos for Jeff Glass and for Chad Vitamalia. I've had interactions with both of them and um, very recently with Jeff Glass. He was um, in, he helped our neighborhood Laguna Grande put up new neighborhood um, watch signs. And he was so responsive and so considerate of our needs because we didn't order enough of them and he wanted to make sure we had everything right, and I just can't say enough about him. So I won't take up a lot of your time, but I just wanted to echo what the department heads um, for those two um, city staffers um, said because I've had interactions with both of them over the years and my neighborhood really appreciates everything that they do for us. Thanks.
Thank you, and I do not see any further public comments for this item.
All right, awesome. Thanks, Clementine. And with that, we'll go to the consent calendar. Um, and then just a few quick things before we check in with everybody to see if there's any other items that we need to pull. Um, but we'll make a correction to item number three. Um, the previous template was used and had the old mayor's name, so we'll have that corrected in the new version. And then we're gonna pull ten, eleven and twelve. Um, does the council want to pull anything else outside of those? Okay, is there anybody in the public that wants to pull anything on the agenda?
It does not appear so, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and see if there's a motion on the consent agenda outside of ten, eleven and twelve with the correction of number three? And then we can move back around to those.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Um, any questions for staff? Let's take it to the public for public comments on the close, on the, I'm sorry, on the consent agenda. Is there any public comment on items on the consent agenda? I'm not seeing anything online. Anything in the chamber?
No, no one is coming forward.
Okay, perfect. All right, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote then, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
I think uh, it'd be appropriate for me to abstain in this case, uh, because uh, in terms of the the minutes, uh, because I wasn't present at the last meeting.
Would it be a yes vote on, or how would you vote on the other items?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Right.
So the consent um, has uh, more than just minutes on it. So do you want to just abstain on the minutes and then you can vote yes on the other items?
Correct. Yes, that's what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoffa?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Hi.
Councilmember Barber?
Hi.
And Mayor Williamson?
I'm gonna say yes for me. So thank you all for that. And let's go to item number ten. Um, which is a side-letter M O U um, with P M L A. I'll pass it to Nat for the presentation on this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Williamson. Uh, this item is a resolution that would authorize the city manager to execute a side letter agreement with the Monterey Police Lieutenants Management Association, also known as P L M A. This is consistent with the closed session direction that council provided staff with recently. And uh, to deliver this very brief presentation is our human resources director, Brett Neal.
Good evening, Mayor Williamson and council members. How are you? And Nat kind of summed it up. So this was authority that was uh, given, direction given in a closed session uh, in compliance with the M O U. We had a reopener. And uh, the reason that I have pulled it is because it's an incorrect uh, effective date. Uh, it's the new letter reads as effective uh, first full pay, first full pay period following council approval. And what was submitted was uh, effective date in November sixteenth. And so that's why I asked it to be pulled so you have the correct information. Do you have any-
Thank you. Thanks, Brett. Um, council, are there any questions? All right, let's take it out to the public uh, for public comment on this item. Is there anything in the chambers?
No one is coming forward.
All right, let's bring it back to the council for a roll call vote, please. I'm sorry, let me ask, are there, are there any comments on from the council?
Uh, I'll second um, Councilmember Hoffa's motion for item-
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the council? All right, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Hi.
And Mayor Williamson?
Yes. Okay, so we'll move on to item number eleven, um, which is in regards to Laguna Grande Regional Park Trail Maintenance Strategy. And I'll pass it back to you now.
Great, thank you, Mayor Tyler. Uh, this item is to uh, authorize the appropriation of funds for the uh, Laguna Grande Regional Trail Maintenance Strategy and Environmental Review Work. And uh, as you know, this uh, Laguna Grande Park is an important uh, park within our community and is a shared responsibility of the city of Monterey along with the Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District and the city of Seaside to uh, provide a very brief overview of the trail maintenance strategy and uh, the work behind Laguna Grande Regional Park is Kimberly Cole, our community development director.
Um, thank you very much. Let me just share my screen. I have a few slides. Can the council members online see my screen?
I can see it.
Great. Um, thank you, Mayor Williamson and council members. Um, I was asked to give a brief presentation on the Laguna Regional Park Trail Maintenance Strategy and the environmental review that is currently underway. Um, our recommendation to you today is to adopt a resolution. We're asking for an appropriation of eighteen thousand six hundred dollars to supplement the current project budget. Um, that appropriation will be from our existing planning office budget. We're asking the authority for a contract amendment and to also issue um, payment. Um, just in terms of background, it's been a while since we've um, talked about the park. The park size is about forty-two acres. The majority of the park is in the city of Seaside, almost eighty-five percent of the total park area, um, with fifteen percent remaining in the city of Monterey. The property owners are really split um, between three, primarily three government agencies. The Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District owns sixty-three percent. And how I think about that is the majority of the water areas and the four bay areas are owned by the park district. Um, and then on either side, the city of Seaside, um, I think you're familiar with the park area adjacent to Canyon Del Ray. And on the city of Monterey side, um, we have about eight percent located in the city of Monterey with our little parks there. Um, we have achieved some milestones as we've worked on this project. Um, the Laguna Grande Trail Maintenance and Vegetation Management Strategy has been published. It's available online. Um, it's a fairly extensive document based on considerable public input. We had walking audits of the park. We had uh, multiple public meetings of the J P A where they discussed strategies and drafted and redrafted the plan. Um, the J P A ultimately directed staff to initiate environmental review. Um, and um, I should just go back one more step. Um, the J P A awarded the contract um, to B F S and this, the government agencies have been sharing the cost of this effort. Um, the park district put in sixty thousand, um, city of Seaside and Monterey have put in twenty-four thousand dollars each. And we need to increase that budget by eighteen thousand six hundred dollars, as I mentioned earlier. Um, the upcoming milestones includes publication of the environmental document for a thirty-day period. We're looking to do that in January of twenty twenty-three. Right now, we're trying to complete uh, and finish up our Native American consultation, which is required under state law. Um, after we receive public comments back, we will try to finalize the environmental document and bringing it forward for certification. Multiple government agencies will need to certify the document, including the J P A is the lead agency, the Parks District, city of Monterey and city of Seaside as responsible agencies. After certification of the environmental document, looking forward to the actual permits for the maintenance, um, we will um, obtain a budget and pursue permits from Fish and Game, the California Coastal Commission, the Regional Water Quality Control Board and Army Corps. And a lot of people ask, you know, why do you even have to get those permits? Anytime you're working uh, um, adjacent to wetlands and water, they're required um, basically under state law. But we're moving forward. And so you may ask why the additional eighteen thousand six hundred dollars? Um, the the yellow line shows the portion of the park in the city of Monterey versus the city of Seaside. Above the line is the city of Seaside. And one of the complexities we figured out as we were working through the environmental document is that um, several of the properties that the um, city of Seaside is, has either sold or leased to private entities actually extend into the park boundaries. And in some cases, there were formal recorded easements and in other cases, not. Um, so we've done a lot of title research. Um, and um, in fact, the city of Seaside went back to their council and obtained another public access easement um, for the Embassy Suites property. Um, we have excluded the In-N-Out property where the walkway um, sort of skirts the In-N-Out property because there is no public access easement technically recorded against the property, so we can't include it in our study. But that's the reason is we had to go back and amend several documents, including the uh, environmental document to address this um, ownership issue that we discovered during the environmental review. So in summary, we're asking the council um, to adopt the attached resolution uh, authorizing the additional appropriation. And we're very much looking forward as a city staff to bringing this document forward to certification in the new year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from the council?
Uh, no question, but just a statement.
Okay, I saw Dr. Barber's hand go up, so let's go to her first and then we can uh, jump to you, Councilmember Smith.
So I have a question. I'm just trying to get an understanding for clarification. Um, was it, what was the percentage I was looking at on the uh, presentation that's in Monterey? Excuse my voice, I have laryngitis. Um, but is it, was it fifteen percent or eight percent? That's actually in Monterey, in the city of Monterey?
Fifteen percent or-
Fifteen percent, right. So it was fifteen percent that was in um, in my city of Monterey. I saw that the original contract, both city of Seaside and Monterey both paid twenty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars fifty cent each. Um, and then now we are paying an additional increase of eighteen thousand six hundred. Is there a reason why um, it's not the um, actually the ratio isn't the same as the percentage of owner? How how what's in the cities as opposed to just being fifty percent split down the middle?
So one of the things we are doing, we're trying not to hold up the project and we had the eighteen thousand six hundred dollars in the planning office budget to move this along in a more timely fashion. At the same time, our Parks Director has approached um, the management of the Parks District in the city of Seaside. And um, we expect to be reimbursed on a third, you know, to split the cost evenly, a third, a third and a third. I will also point out, um, one of the major reasons for our participation in the funding is through the public process. It's been our citizens that live most closely to this park. Um, the city of Seaside is separated by Canyon Del Ray. And in a lot of ways, it's our citizens that have been driving this process and raising the concerns that they would like resolved. So the reason why um, we are proposing eighteen thousand six hundred is so we can move along in a timely fashion. Um, but we hope to be reimbursed by a third and a third from the Seaside and the Park District.
Okay, that's something that you're gonna be seeking out.
We already have and we've, and they're going to have to bring it individually to their boards.
Okay, and will be kept abreast?
We can do that, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, and then uh, Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I think uh, Kim kind of touched on the point and and I appreciate um, her question. I just was gonna read the section, you covered it just now. If those are those folks that are watching this carefully, they can refer to packet page ninety-eight. Uh, it is contained in the staff report and I appreciate that. And it says city staff does not want to delay this project any further. So Monterey city staff are suggesting the city fund the full amount and request reimbursement. So I just want to say I support the strategy and I think the partnership in um, this district has been good so far, getting better all the time. There's much work to do. And uh, most, most if not all of the residents are in the city of Monterey along that area. So I don't want to see a delay, so I would support the, as you've suggested. And we have the funds, so I think it makes sense to move this along and not have to wait. So we have multiple agencies that are figuring out how to chip in just a few dollars. I think it's the right approach and and I can support that. That was all, Mayor.
Beautiful. Thank you. Um, any other council members wish to ask any questions at this time?
Uh, not, not a question, but a comment as well, if I may.
If if, do you want to have it go out to the public first or do you want to go out and make your comment now?
I can make the comment now.
Okay.
Um, just uh, thank you, uh, Kim, for the uh, refresher information about um, this whole process. I just wanted to acknowledge the uh, uh, the the work that's gone into bringing everyone together, the various jurisdictions and the advocates, the the agencies that have been a part of this. I know that there have been-
I know that there have been many, many conversations about who's going to do what and that kind of thing. So I just want to acknowledge, you know, the victories, right, that we are seeing along the way in getting a group of folks to work together. And that to me is really promising and fills me with a lot of enthusiasm, knowing that also this whole area, there, there are projects in the pipeline that are going to require just that as well, that collaboration. So I just wanted to point that out and I do also support what you've brought forward. Thank you.
Beautiful.
If I could just say, just a few words, thank you for the recognition of staff. I know our, Kim Cole, our community development director, as well as Karen Larson, our Parks Director, have spent a considerable amount of time. And we are serving as a lead agency in doing this great work in kind and candidly doing the lion's share of the, the planning work behind this. But we're doing that because it's, as councils indicated, it's an important priority for the community and for the neighborhood around the Laguna Grande Park. And, and we'll continue to update. I'll be remiss if I didn't say and that we are updating and providing updates on that project on haveryoursamemonterey.org, the website, and engaging and keeping the neighborhood association informed as well.
Thanks, Nat, appreciate that update. Let's go ahead and take it out to public comment.
Not seeing any in the chamber. I'm going to call on Esther Malkin.
Hello again. I'm speaking now as the president of Laguna Grande Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association. And I want to thank staff for trying to do whatever they can to push this through because some of you know that this has been an ongoing project for well over ten years that I personally have been pushing. And part of the reason why this is so important is that to, to, to our city is that we are the only city that has residents that live along this park and are directly affected. Seaside has a handful of businesses, but we have actual residents that have this park in literally almost steps from their backyards. So with that, I'm going to cite the fact mentioned in the report that discrepancies in the park boundary and ownership was discovered as been part of the problem. That shouldn't be new, that's not news. It's, it's already been discussed for the ten years. And if you look at the map again, you can see that the line of along the city border between us and Seaside is not straight. And it's kind of weird the way that it's been drawn. And about eight years ago, Mayor Oberson had suggested revisiting that and making it a straighter line because there is a lot of confusion behind these homeowners' homes when they have to call dispatch nine-one-one for any encampment issues or fire issues on who's the agency responding. Because right in the canyon where our neighbors have their backyard issues, that section within two or three steps, you could be talking about Seaside. And another two or three steps to another side, you're talking about Regional Parks District. So I would like to remind the council that they should revisit that boundaries issue and consider, you know, redoing that. I don't know how involved it is, but I'll give you another example why this is important. The soccer field that is on, that's almost attached to the Monterey side city park is, was built and paid for by NCIP funds, but it was done on Seaside property. That was an oversight from people that were way before, you know, I was on board. But that is a huge oversight. And till this day, I don't know if it's been decided who's going to maintain it because we paid the upfront costs, but it is in the city of Seaside. And part of that is because of the way that line between the two cities is drawn. And it would avoid future problems if you went ahead and addressed that instead of continuing to postpone it until the next issue comes along. But we really do appreciate seeing some movement on this because it's been way overdue and the residents are really the ones being affected that live over here. Thank you.
I do not see any further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, beautiful. And I know people are concerned. I'm getting a couple of messages from folks saying that I look like a silhouette and I don't know the lighting in the space that I'm in, so I will fix that for the evening session. So just bear with me here. I don't see any other public comments, so we'll bring it back to the council. Is there a motion or any comments that, at this time?
I'll move to approve and I do have a comment when it's appropriate.
Second.
Perfect, go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, so first of all, appreciate Councilmember Barber for bringing up the point she did. It is a valid point about fairness. But for all of the reasons elicited by, laid up by staff, Esther Malkin as well, I'm very excited about supporting this project. The things that we need to do to address neighborhood concerns in Laguna Grande, we really can't do till we move this forward. So expediting this is, I think, really important to our city. Thank you.
Well said, Alan. Anybody else on the council have a comment at this time?
The only thing I would, Mayor, this is Ed. The only thing I would say is that there's still a lot of work to be done. And in terms of the residents that are on our side, I hate to say our side, in the city of Monterey, let's say that. We need to never worry about who to call when you need help. The call center, Monterey County Communications, Monterey County Emergency Communications, whether it's non, non-emergency or nine-one-one, goes to the same place. So if you're fearful of whether the jurisdiction is in Seaside or if it's in Monterey, don't let that hesitate you to call immediately to your number that you have, which is six four six three nine one four Monterey PD. And the emergency responding units will figure out, once they get there, whose jurisdiction it is to take action. So just in anything else, don't think too much about, you know, feet or who's going to respond. And, you know, am I telling, am I telling in the right place? Just go ahead and call if you have an emergency, don't hesitate. And the emergency responding units will figure out whose jurisdiction it's going to be in. So I just wanted to, to get that out there as well. Because I know the, as has been said, the, the borders are very difficult to figure out. If you're out there at three o'clock in the morning and working for the police department, trying to figure out a map in the dark, it's impossible. But the agencies work well together. They'll respond, they'll figure it out, and they'll, they'll, they'll triage it and move forward. So just like anything else, if you think you're in the county, you're trying to get ahold of the county, don't do that because it may be that you're in Monterey jurisdiction or you're in the city of, or you're in the county. As we have, you know, Jocelyn County or Jocelyn Canyon and Sylvan Road. So it gets confusing around the border. So don't worry about those borders if you have an emergency. Don't wait, make sure you make the call. That's the only thing I want to say.
Thanks, Ed. You know, and I'll just wrap this up by giving staff appreciation for, for bringing this forward, helping to push this along and champion this. I know that there's a lot of residents that are concerned in regards to this issue. And so we have an item on the agenda where we'll be appointing one of the council members to represent the JPA. And we just encourage folks to stay in contact with whoever that representative ends up being. And hopefully they can work with, well with the community and, and the rest of the JPA participants to help kind of push this along. And, and so with that, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Hi.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
That's a yes for me. And then with that, we'll go to item number twelve, which is the Madison Van Buren project behind City Hall here. So I'll pass it to Nat for a quick presentation.
Okay, I'll pass this along to Kim Cole, our community development director.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This afternoon, we'll be discussing a proposed affordable housing project located behind City Hall. The address is five eighty-seven, five ninety-three Van Buren, four twenty-four and four fifty Madison. Refer to the small offices and residential, vacant residential structures directly behind City Hall. This afternoon, you will be providing direction on loan deed documents and a loan guarantee. Our recommendation is that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city to execute a loan with Mid Penn Housing. That you give us the city manager the authority to sign deed documents, including a deed of trust to secure the loan and guarantee the loan obligation of fifty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. In terms of background, the affordable housing project behind City Hall has, has already been through a fairly extensive process. But I'd say we're in the formal steps right now of moving it towards execution. In this past summer.
Sorry, we're just realizing that the wrong screen is being shared. Bear with us for just one moment for those who are, are joining us on Zoom.
What's being shown now?
We're seeing, well, not anything anymore. We were seeing a folder before.
Let's try this again. Can you see?
There we go.
Yep, we see that, it's not in presentation mode, but we see the presentation now.
Okay, we'll get there. As I was mentioning.
That looks perfect.
Great, thank you, Mayor Williamson, sorry about that.
We're seeing it here.
In this past July, the city council approved an exclusive negotiating agreement with Mid Penn Housing. They are an affordable housing developer dedicated to providing a hundred percent low-income housing project behind City Hall. The exclusive negotiating agreement that was authorized, authorized two hundred and forty days with a one-year extension option. In September, the city council awarded fifty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars in a state grant. It's called the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Grant for Pre-Development Studies. And that's a grant the city of Monterey pursued and was able to obtain. As we've been working on dedicating those monies to these projects, we've been in negotiations with the state of California. And the state requires that even though the city received those monies through a grant fund, that we dedicate it to the project via a loan. So it's not, we can't just directly grant the money from the state to the city to Mid Penn. It's a loan, a recorded loan against the property. And we're going to have to secure that through a deed of trust on our own property. In most cases in the state, the affordable housing developer may already own the property. In this case, it'll be secured through our own property because we have yet to transfer or enter into a lease agreement with Mid Penn Housing. That'll occur at the end of this process. And that the last part is the state looks to the city to guarantee that loan. So if this project does not go forward, the city would have to reimburse our PLHA grant money. So our account where that's held with city monies. And that would be either if Mid Penn or the city of Monterey decided not to move the project forward. I do want to talk a little bit about what are pre-development studies because sometimes that's surprising to people that don't work on development. It includes things like surveying the project site. It includes appraisals, it includes soil reports, it includes pre-engineering documents. And to really to find out if the site is feasible to develop. So it's really that next step in, I would say, the technical approach to development on the site. The, we're splitting those pre-development costs half with Mid Penn. Mid Penn's already started all of those and have expended their funds. And what we're doing this evening is asking the council to authorize the city to execute a loan with Mid Penn Housing, to allow us to sign the deed documents and to secure the, the loan and to guarantee the loan obligation. Vanessa Diffinbaugh with Mid Penn Housing is here as well and can answer any questions on the specific development.
Thanks, Kim, for the presentation. I'll just quickly share that I, I asked for this item to be polled and I'm wondering where the opportunities exist for us to look at helping to expedite the process. And I want to be clear that I'm not talking about expediting the process in regards to the public participation process and allowing the public to engage and provide feedback and input. But what we can do as a jurisdiction to help move along the administrative side of this conversation. And I'm not sure if we'll fully answer this, this evening, but I, I just wanted to, to put that out there and ask. So I'm not sure if that's appropriate for staff to answer now or maybe we want Vanessa to come up and do a presentation.
Vanessa may have some input on that. We are going to be starting in the new year. We'll be looking to do a public presentation on the project, probably in the council chambers, and to be moving the project, starting through the more formal public engagement process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Vanessa.
Perfect, thank you, Kim.
Good evening, Mayor Williamson, council. Congratulations to the new members, nice to see you all. Thanks for that great overview, Kim. I think you did a really good job talking about sort of where we've been and also just what is due diligence. So I'll just add a few things to what you already said. Mid Penn did commit seventy-five thousand dollars of Mid Penn feasibility funds, which we have already spent, which is good news. That means we got a lot of people into contract and a lot of reports already done. So we have a full topographic survey and a boundary survey. They've started on the ALTA survey. Those are the documents that the design team needs to start the architectural concepts to see really what fits, how and where. We also have a biotic report done, which is the first step of the NEPA process. We didn't find anything, anything too unusual or surprising there, nothing that would stop development. We also have an arborist report done as well as an appraisal. And then we did have to get a new phase one environmental report done. So the city, you may remember, already got a phase one done before they released the RFP. I think that report was from two thousand nineteen. The new phase one came back essentially the same, which flagged a underground storage tank leak at the fire station across the street, which will require us to do a phase two. And so that will be pretty expensive and it will require a few months worth of drilling and soil sampling, water sampling, and soil vapor assessment. So that really is the next step and we won't start that due diligence until we get the seats, the loan agreement with the city. Because as I said, we did already spend the Mid Penn funds and I know the council has already approved these. And staff's been working really hard with a complicated system. So I do appreciate everything you're doing and that you brought it back to council right before the holidays is great, so we can keep this moving. And as Kim said, the next step will be to start the community engagement process. I've asked our design team, which is a really fantastic pair. We have Paul Davis Partnership and Justin Polly Architects working together to come up with three to four conceptual designs that show different arrangements of housing. But we're still hoping to do three, two to three stories, up to hopefully thirty-six or more units. And we should have some really basic studies done in January. And we'd love the opportunity to get council input, staff input, and then we will have a whole community engagement process that we do on all of our projects, Mid Penn. So that's the direct next step. And then, as you know, this, we're really on step one. So if you want at any point, I'm happy to take you through the timeline for affordable housing, what comes after community engagement design. I think the good thing we have going for us on this project is that the city does agree that this site qualifies for SB thirty-five, which is a streamlining bill. So we will be able to use that process to work with city staff and the planning department to streamline the approvals. We'll still do the community engagement, but we'll streamline the approvals. And hopefully that will allow us to find, get to financing quicker. Happy to take questions.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of questions, but I don't want to take up too much time this evening to not go too far astray from what's in front of us. But I do appreciate the update, Vanessa. And I think that having this on the council agenda, to have an update in regards to where we're at with things, in particular, to get the new council members up to speed on this project, I think would be really helpful. Assuming, and, and this is a, a, a good assumption, I think that we'll, we'll approve this tonight. How soon will the city staff be able to get payment to Mid Penns and they can move forward with the preceding steps?
So we do have to get the loan agreement approved by the state of California. So we do have to get the loan agreement approved by the state of California. So, I mean, it's at the top of our attorney staff's, their workload, they're working diligently on it. So I mean, we hope to wrap it up in the beginning of twenty twenty three and to get the monies to Mid Penn so they can finish their studies. Um, I can't give you a guarantee on how long it's going to take from the state, but I can say they've been good partners. They've been diligently calling us back, working through what quite frankly is a fairly complicated process. We can't just give the grant to Mid Penn. They're requiring us to do the loan and all the legal documentation. So we will be working on that in early twenty twenty three.
Okay, thanks, Kim. I have any other questions? I'll pass to the rest of the council to see if there's anything.
Uh, yeah, Mayor, I have one question and it's actually Kim. Uh, thank you, Vanessa. A good presentation. So there's nothing here that tells us the terms because it's referred to as a loan. So I don't want to assume, but if you could tell me, are there terms and conditions on the loan? Does it involve interest? Or is it one of those things where it's in our pocket? The state agrees and it goes out from us and goes to Mid Penn's pocket. Everything goes right and there's no interest rate, loan fees or anything else.
That is my understanding, although the guidelines for if you read the PLHA guidelines, all they say is a loan has to be secured. So I'll say the the state is going to review our loan documents. So we'll have to get. You know, part of this will be through the details as we work through it. It's my understanding. It's in our account, the money that through the loan obligation, then we can designate those monies towards Mid Penn.
Yeah, and it makes sense that we're going to ask the state, what do they expect? What are they looking for? Do you have a model? Do you have a template?
And it looks like Ms. Dobby, who's representing attorney's office.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Um, yes, our office is already working on this and we are working on it through the lens that previously the city council was okay with just donating this money and not having a bunch of tedious terms and conditions. And so we're well aware of that, but we do have to work within the state parameters. So.
Yeah.
We'll get it moved along. I do recall that the term of repayment was incredibly long, but um, you know. Yeah, we're doing what we can.
Yeah, and and I I understand that, you know, there's still work to be done and that's part of why there's going to have to be a delay. But whenever we talk about a loan, there's no terms in front of us now. So if there are terms that it will come back to us because it's a legal contract that we're having to approve of. Unless you think that we're making the motion tonight that alleviates us having to come back for any future date on a contract.
Right, this would be to approve executing a loan document. And if you like, I can, if we take a brief break, I can have Assistant City Attorney Karen Salama give us a brief overview of the terms that are proposed right now.
Um, the only thing I would say is we have a fiduciary responsibility to pay attention to these details if there are terms and conditions in the contract. Uh, and I don't want to delay anything. So I would be okay with moving on tonight. And I can make the motion to do that and I would be satisfied to uh, receive information at a future date once we know what the state's expectation is.
Right, so it might help if I explain it this way. Before, we were going to give fifty six thousand dollars, fifty seven thousand dollars, no, you know, as a as a grant. Um, and now we're still giving the money, but the state is requiring us to have it as a loan to Mid Penn instead of us just giving the money. So the only risk to the city really is that we have to guarantee it and pay it back to the state should things not work out, but we were already willing to give it. So it's sort of a circular
Right.
thing. So there's no real terms that are going to damage the city's position if you work from the premise that we are willing to give it, you know, away. But uh, fair enough. And and I, like I said, I could ask Karen to pop on and give us a overview of the terms that are being discussed right now, but they're not finalized, I don't believe. So this was just to expedite.
Um, I I don't need that and I'm comfortable with your explanation and with the presentation. And I would just, if there's no other discussion, maybe now's the time to make a motion. So I don't want to. I don't want to go too far.
I had my hand up, so um, once you get finished, just let me know.
Yeah, that's that's the only comment I had, so I'll stand by.
Uh, so I first want to thank both of you, Kim and Vanessa. Awesome presentation. And thank you for bringing this up and keeping this in front of us. This is very important. And kind of along the lines of what Ed was talking about, I was just curious about any prepayment penalties. If that was in the terms, I was just curious. I know it's kind of circular of how it's being done. But I think that's important too about any type of prepayment penalties. But just something to to be curious about once we get further into the terms. Thank you.
Mayor, I think it's back back to you, Mayor.
Was that a question, Dr. Barber for staff or is that just a a comment?
Yeah, it was. It was really a question, but it turned into a comment after I listened to the response from Ed's questions because it's in the same line of terms. So it's it's kind of like, well, once we get into the terms, we could be able to understand. Excuse me, if that is part of the terms, whether there's a prepayment penalty. So just really a comment at this point until we get into the terms.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Are there any other questions from the council?
Just more interruptions from the lawyer. Sorry.
Go ahead.
So my understanding now from from Assistant City Attorney Karen Salama is that there is a small amount of interest. It's three percent simple interest at construction closing when they get the financing. There is no prepayment penalty.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
So when you say three percent simple, to me, that means if it's rounding up to fifty seven thousand dollars and construction took two years, it would be three percent compounded on fifty seven thousand dollars for two years. And that that fee would have to be combined with the loan and then repaid by Mid Penn?
Don't make me reveal my algebra one grade.
Yeah.
Any finance folks out here? I could figure that out, but I don't know the answer.
Well, I don't need to know. I don't need to know the amount, but three percent.
Yeah.
Over construction for two years would be compounded three percent and then another three percent on top of the fifty seven thousand. So we don't have the terms in front of us, but I'm okay to move forward. But are you saying that at the end of construction, Mid Penn is responsible for paying this back?
Yeah, yes. Well, the three at three percent simple interest at construction closing when they get the financing.
Okay.
And maybe Karen's joined on Zoom by now and she might be able to better explain this than me because I haven't actually read the contract.
Sort of thought this was a forgivable loan coming from the state. Coming from us, coming from the state funds.
It's 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 money given to the city that we wanted to give away without being repaid, but the state won't allow us to do that. So the state is requiring us to get the money back.
Okay. We're really getting into the weeds without having the document in front of us. And I and I think.
Can you tell the parents on?
And and I would just reemphasize what our city attorney mentioned. I I think the the goal, the the goal here was to move forward with it. We have the opportunity with this loan. The city was willing, more than willing to front the money without uh, repayment and for us to move forward. We can get into the weeds if 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 we want, if council also chooses with details on the loan, but.
We can trail it tonight and I could come back with very.
Why? Why don't we go to public comment and and take some public comment at this time and then we can bring it back to the council for for the deliberation? So let's open up to the public. Is there anybody in the chambers that wishes to speak on this item?
Uh, Vanessa is back up here.
I was just going to add to the finance conversation if I could for a minute.
Absolutely.
So I just sort of in staff's defense, this is a brand new program from HCD. These PH LA loans are brand new and nobody really knows how it works, even our attorneys. So that's why we're all kind of scrambling. But in general, my understanding is that this is a pre development loan that will then be rolled into construction closing as a three percent simple interest loan for fifty five years with residual receipts, which means at the end of the project, if there's cash flow, we split it based on all the other loans and the order. So I'm happy to do a finance presentation at a later date. Probably I'll bring my director who can explain this much better than I can. But I do appreciate the staff's willingness to just kind of go forward and and let us hopefully keep doing due diligence as all the attorneys figure out how to work with HCD. That does seem like the good path forward to me if you're comfortable.
That was really helpful. Thanks for that clarification. Is there anybody else in the chambers that wishes to speak in the public?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We do have a Zoom participant on.
Perfect. I'll let you take that.
Go ahead, please, Esther.
Yeah, me again, this time speaking as founder of Monterey County Renters United, which was behind the push to have this type of project looked at by the city. I'm wondering at what point in this process does a waitlist for people that can apply for these units become open? And I'm wondering if because Mid Penn also did the Van Buren Senior Housing across the street from this one, if that waitlist will cross over or transfer to this new project. And the reason I'm asking is because we continue to talk about trying to get the people that are here in Monterey working and living housing, but when we use Mid Penn and probably some other developers, we are limited and have to open it up to countywide residents applying for these units. So I'm curious if there's a way that we could find out the timeline when the application process will open up. Because it's really important for us to create this housing, especially where it is for people who are already living here and already working here. So my understanding is that the senior housing has had nothing less than a thousand applicants since it was opened up. And that was only, I think, eighteen units. So we have so few opportunities for people that are already here that need units like this from in our city to have to, you know, open this up countywide, which is why I also suggest that in the other camp, other cap projects that the city is going to be looking at, that we cast a wider net to try and bring in developers that are not going to tie our hands and let us give priority as many other cities in the state do in various ways to the people that are already living and working in the city that is offering this affordable housing. So I'm not sure if Vanessa can answer that question, or it doesn't even have to be answered tonight. But I think it's important for us to know when in the process this waitlist becomes open and how big it is, because it's going to give us a gauge on what we're going to see. Since this one is not going to be just limited to seniors and it will, it will show us what we can expect in future projects. Thank you.
All right, I think that might be the end of public comment comment time. Do you do you agree with that?
Yes, I do. I don't see anyone else requesting to speak.
Okay, perfect. So I'll just ask, I I think it's a good question that that Esther asked. But I I would try to see if we can defer that until we come back for a larger update on the topic so that we don't get too far away from this agenda item. I'm I'm not sure how how council feels. I think it would be appropriate for us to move forward and I don't want to rush us through, but we're getting close to five thirty. So I'll at this point, I'll I'll open it up for for comments, questions from the council or or even consider a motion. And I see Councilmember Hoffa's hand up.
Yeah, so um, I I appreciate the questions from my fellow council members. And I think it's, you know, appropriate to be concerned about our fiduciary responsibility. In this case, though, I would just note, as staff reminded us, we would be prepared to simply give this money to Mid Penn. We had no, no desire to actually lend it to them. The only reason we're entering into a loan is because we're required to do so. So then the amount of interest on that, you know, is, I think, pretty minimal. So I, given the importance of this project, given how long it takes to get these projects move forward to completion. And given how small this amount of money is, and quite frankly, I would support just using money from our general fund if we needed to, if that was, if that was necessary. So given all of that, I'm going to move staff of staff recommendation and hope we can keep this project moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoffa. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, then moved and seconded. Any other comments from the council?
Um, Mayor, the only counsel, the comment I have is to reinforce the the offer from staff. And uh, once the financing pictures figured out, I'll come back and make a presentation to the council. I think we all are anxious. Nobody wants to to hold anything up because this is a a great project, viable project that uh, I support and look forward to seeing the day that we have a construction and a ribbon cutting. And and I hope it's thirty four units, maybe even thirty six if if there's water on the property. So look forward to seeing that. The the financing for this first step doesn't bother me. The greater financing that is going to be required for the uh, the multimillion dollars that will be required for the the actual build is the big challenge Mid Penn has. I just want to say that three percent annual on fifty seven thousand dollars is is actually no small sum. We're talking about fourteen thousand dollars. So if if, you know, this this is why these loans are important and I'm sure this one will get figured out. But when there's fifty seven thousand dollars at the front end, it's three percent simple interest. If it winds up getting wrapped into a longer term of fifty five years, these loans compound themselves to the point of huge complications. So I don't take it lightly. I ask the questions because it's important for us to know what we're voting for. Uh, but I look forward to the financial statements, the financial pictures as we move forward. Because I don't want to easily just say yes to something that could cost somebody uh, some entity like Mid Penn, uh, future dollars that are precious and we want to see those dollars go to the project, not for paper and and studies. So I look forward to seeing this move along. Thank you.
Beautiful. Okay, and with that, um, we will go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
All right, Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson. I'm sorry, excuse me, Mayor Williamson.
Yes. Muscle member, exactly. It's all good. You're really good.
Okay.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thanks for that dialogue. I really appreciate it. And I know that Karen jumped on, so I appreciate you being on standby to help us continue this dialogue. With that, I know we have two items left on the agenda for the public appearance. We're not going to get to that. It's just, there's just not enough time and I want to make sure that we can get to dinner break. We also don't have time to go to to close session, but I just want to ask staff, can I, can we open it up for public comments for those that have shown up that were intending to share public comments on closed session agenda items at this point?
Yes, you can. And on on closed session items, yes. And then you can also vote to continue uh, the two items for this afternoon to this evening as well.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and I I'll make a motion to move those two items and fourteen and fifteen to this evening's agenda?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take it up. Thank you. Let's take it up to uh, public for public input on that.
No one is coming forward, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's bring it back to the council for a roll call vote, please.
Uh, Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Hi.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
Yes, perfect. Thank you. And then let's go ahead and open up to uh, public comment on closed session agenda items.
There are none here in council chambers, Mr. Mayor.
And no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, well, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting until we're back at seven o'clock. Thank you, everybody.
Council meeting for our evening session. We moved things around a little bit here. We just get to my notes to make sure I get this correct. So let's go ahead and start off with the the Pledge of Allegiance. Ed, do you want to go ahead and get us started here?
You bet. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, beautiful. It is time to provide the instructions to the public on how they can participate.
Yes, thank you. For the safe attendance of our public meetings, masks are required for all who attend in person regardless of vaccination status except those who are younger than two or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. Please keep phones and devices in the council chamber muted to prevent audio interference. There are two ways to virtually participate in today's meeting. You may join using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at icertchmonterey.org. An up-to-date version of the Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864 and enter meeting ID 1607729333 pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak, and I will call in each public speaker in the order of hands raised. Please stay within the time limit established for today's meeting. A countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. And today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay. And on Comcast channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay, and we look forward to receiving your public comment.
Beautiful. So let's see if there's any public comments on there for things that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the chambers?
No one is coming forward.
I'm not seeing any online. So we'll close public comment. And then before moving forward, I just want to get a consensus from the council. I'm thinking we can go ahead and move forward with the MCTID item first. And then we can go to measure P, measure S, and then the outside committee appointments, and then we'll go to closed session. Does that work for everybody?
Did we miss one?
I think that's it. We removed the two items from the afternoon and then the evening, the public appearance items, what we'll listen to first. Does that work good? Perfect. Okay, staff, I'll pass it over to you for the Monterey County Tourism Improvement District. Intention to renew levy assessment on lodging business, fixing public hearings, requesting consents of cities. So now I'll pass it to you.
Right, thank you Mayor Williamson and members of the City Council. This evening, we're here to present a recommendation for council to adopt three resolutions. And I'm not sure if Clementine can help us get the presentation up on the screen while I provide a very broad introduction about why the Monterey County Tourism Improvement District is such an important part of our efforts and the region's efforts to promote tourism in the region. And it's because tourism is the number one economic driver in the city of Monterey. Many of us talked about over the years, over the last several decades, at least, you know, I've been here in Monterey before in the in the early 2000s. And there was always talk about how if tourism went away, it would economically devastate our communities. And also the revenue that the city relies upon to deliver public services, whether that's police or fire or parks, other other services. And sadly, the pandemic proved us correct in that with the significant drop in revenues, mainly the tourism, TOT, transient occupancy tax, sales tax, which is primarily from non-residents. Both of those funds drastically dropped. We lost as a city over $32 million in funding. And we were in the top 10 cities based on the California State Auditor. They reported that Monterey top 10 cities most economically devastated by the pandemic, and that's because of the drop in tourism revenue. So the TID is one, the I would argue, the largest component of of support for tourism marketing that's needed in the region. And we'll go to the next slide. There's three actions that we'll be sharing or recommending to all of you. The first is to adopt a resolution declaring the city's intent to renew the MCTID and levy an assessment on lodging businesses. The second is to adopt a resolution that's requesting consent from the county as well as other participating cities in the Tourism Improvement District. And the third is to adopt a resolution adopting procedural guidelines on renewal of the TID. Next slide, please. So what is the what is the MCTID? And I'll ask Clementine to help minimize the little thumbnails of our council members so folks can see the full screen. Thank you so much. The MCTID was first launched in 2006. It's a benefit assessment district, so it's an assessment for and by the lodging properties in the district. Why does this matter? And why is this coming before you this evening as a Monterey City Council? It's because the city of Monterey is serving as the lead aid.
Council meeting for our evening session, we moved things around a little bit here. We just get to my notes to make sure I get this correct. So let's go ahead and start off with the the pledge of allegiance. Ed, do you want to go ahead and get us started here?
You bet. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, beautiful. So we'll go ahead and continue public comments for things that are not on the agenda, and I think I'll pass it to Clement. That is time to provide the instructions to the public on how they can participate.
Yes, thank you. For the safe attendance of our public meetings, masks are required for all who attend in person regardless of vaccination status, except those who are younger than two or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. Please keep phones and devices in the council chamber muted to prevent audio interference. There are two ways to virtually participate in today's meeting. You may join using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at icearchmonterey.org. An up-to-date version of the Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free eight three three five six eight 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 six four and enter meeting ID one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound, and if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak, and I will call in each public speaker in the order of hands raised. Please stay within the time limit established for today's meeting. A countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. And today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay, and we look forward to receiving your public comment.
Beautiful. So let's see if there's any public comments on there for things that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the chambers?
No one is coming forward.
I'm not seeing any online. So we'll close public comment. And then before moving forward, I just want to get a consensus from the council. I'm thinking we can go ahead and move forward with the MCTID, MCTID item first. And then we can go to measure P, measure S, and then the outside committee appointments, and then we'll put a closed session. Does that work for everybody?
Did we miss one?
I think that's it. We removed the two items from the afternoon and then the evening, the public appearance items, what we'll listen to first. Does that work good?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, staff, I'll pass it over to you for the Monterey County Tourism Improvement District. Intention to renew levy assessment on lodging business, fixing public hearings, requesting consents of cities. So now I'll pass it over to you.
Right, thank you Mayor Williamson and members of the city council. This evening, we're here to present a recommendation for council to adopt three resolutions. And I'm not sure if Clementine can help us get the presentation up on the screen while I provide a very broad introduction about why the Monterey County Tourism Improvement District is such an important part of our efforts and the region's efforts to promote tourism in the region, and it's because tourism is the number one economic driver in the city of Monterey. Many of us talked about over the years, over the last several decades, at least, you know, I've been here in Monterey before in the in the early 2000s, and there was always talk about how if tourism went away, it would economically devastate our communities and also the revenue that the city relies upon to deliver public services, whether that's police or fire or parks, other other services. And sadly, the pandemic proved us correct in that with the significant drop in revenues, mainly the tourism, TOT, transient occupancy tax, sales tax, which is primarily from non-residents, both of those funds drastically dropped. We lost as a city over $32 million in funding, and we were in the top 10 cities based on the California State Auditor. They reported that Monterey top 10 cities most economically devastated by the pandemic, and that's because of the drop in tourism revenue. So the TID is one, the, I would argue, the largest component of of support for tourism marketing that's needed in the region. And we'll go to the next slide. There's three actions that we'll be sharing or recommending to all of you. The first is to adopt a resolution declaring the city's intent to renew the MCTID and levy an assessment on lodging businesses. The second is to adopt a resolution that's requesting consent from the county as well as other participating cities in the Tourism Improvement District. And the third is to adopt a resolution adopting procedural guidelines on renewal of the TID. Next slide, please. So what is the, what is the MCTID? And I'll ask Clementine to help minimize the little thumbnails of our council members so folks can see the full screen. Thank you so much. The MCTID was first launched in 2006. It's a benefit assessment district, so it's an assessment for and by the lodging properties in the district. Why does this matter and why is this coming before you this evening as a Monterey City Council? It's because the city of Monterey is serving as the lead agency on behalf of all of the participating jurisdictions. On the left, you'll see there's a map of the tourism district boundaries, cities of Marina, Seaside, Carmel, Pacific Grove, and Delray Oaks, Sand City, the peninsula, city of Salinas, as well as part of the district and the county of Monterey. There are still discussions about whether or not specific cities within South County will will join. It's in the resolution, but there may be some changes to that as well. That includes King City, Solidad, Greenfield, Gonzalez. But there is no cost to the city, no general fund dollars used for the TID. Excellent, please. So benefits of the TID, the renewal of this county tourism improvement district would generate roughly $8.86 million in year one alone. It does allow for the marketing, the destination, the region, including the city of Monterey and all of the assets. You see an image on the left, a marketing campaign specific to Monterey and featuring Canary Row. Often you'll see promoting the aquarium, the Fisherman's Wharf, other parts of our beautiful destination. And it also provides customized efforts that help promote Monterey and the region as a whole, and does provide a stable source of funding for tourism promotion. And the funds raised are returned to the Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau, which serves as a, as the recipient of these funds and delivers the destination marketing services. Here are a few more graphics that highlight some of the work that the CVB does and how the TID dollars are spent. That also largely goes towards group sales, which is an important component of not just promoting Monterey as a destination for leisure travelers, but also for business travelers. We recognized earlier today Doug Phillips, our conference center general manager, who's retiring, and how important that piece of group business is to the region. Helps midweek increase the TOT revenue for the city as well as helps increase our sales tax revenue, which we rely upon. And you'll be hearing next as we talk about measure P and S. Next slide, please. A few more graphics highlighting the conference center as well as meetings in Monterey. That's the photo on the right is the beautiful Cooper Malera Adobe project there. All right. So next steps before you this evening are the three resolutions I discussed earlier. There's a process that also includes a public meeting on January 17th, a final public hearing and adoption of the resolution of formation on February 21st. At that time, there will also be a resolution to modify the existing TID since that will sunset essentially a little bit early so that the new TID is renewed. May 2nd is the expected date for a public hearing to modify that existing TID, and then the renewal will begin on July 1st, 2023 for a 10-year term. The next few slides are courtesy of the Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And what the lodging community, and there's been a committee made up of a number of hospitality professionals and those in the city of Monterey and in the region, decided to renew the district with a few slight changes. So you'll see a five-year term is now a 10-year term. The new district is targeted to be in place by July 1 of 2023. And as you'll see from the assessment rates, there is a recommended increase. So the lodging properties have agreed and there is consensus to to have a slightly modified rate where limited service properties would go up from $1 per occupied room night to $1.50. The non-luxury full service would go to $4.50 per occupied room night and then $7 per room night for a luxury service. And you can see there's also an escalator piece where increases the assessment rates biannually with approval of the MCTID Oversight Committee to pause that increase. So 20 cents, 60 cents, and 90 cents respectively. The district petition process began just a little over a month ago, and so far, over 67.5% of lodging properties, based on the weighted vote, have have approved the TID. And in the city of Monterey alone, that's over 84%, so overwhelmingly supportive of this TID renewal. And why renew the MCTID? So we've got Rob O'Keefe, the executive director, CEO of the Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau, who's here in the audience. He likes to say we have a first-class destination with a second-class budget, and I'm happy to repeat that. And it's, it really is true. When you look per hotel room and per room night, the DMO, which stands for Destination Marketing Organization, Monterey County is almost dead last among all of the competitors in terms of how much money is spent per hotel room to market the destination. Like Tahoe is at the at the bottom, but other communities such as San Diego, Slow, the San Luis Obispo, and the Palm Springs, Napa Valley, San Jose, Newport Beach spend quite a bit more per hotel room. And and that's one of the reasons why the rates are scheduled to be increased, or that's what's being recommended. And and Napa Valley is an example, a very strong competitor. It spends more than double what Monterey County spends on marketing. Next slide, please. So this is the impact of the renewal on the competitive set rank. So you can see, should this TID be renewed, the county's revenues would go up and it would allow Monterey County to be more competitive somewhere towards towards the middle, middle to to top of the competitive spectrum there. And then some other strategic programming and what the CVB calls enhancements with additional resources. So part of this isn't just more, it isn't about more more traffic because we've talked about as a destination, the need to have increased sustainable tourism and having the right type of visitors here. And part of that means focusing on the lower occupancy months, the midweek. We don't need to necessarily focus on the the weekends where we already have full or close to full occupancy and then try to encourage folks to stay longer. The whole idea about one more night in Monterey generates more revenue for for the community and for our economy and for those who live and work here. Part of the group business development is in the strategy as well. How do we best fit the groups and meetings that take place in the community? And that also applies to the variety of group sales assets we have in Monterey, whether that's the Monterey Conference Center, the Portola Hotel, the Marriott, we've got Clement, Monterey Plaza, others. I started naming hotels, and I feel like I have to name every single one, or else I'm going to offend someone. The responsible travel promotion, so that that also refers to how we can promote responsible tourism and sustainable tourism. Next slide, please. So the the idea behind this, $2.2 billion overall in incremental visitor spending, $58.3 million in incremental TOT revenue. And and Rob O'Keefe is here, and he'll, I think he will have a few words to to share with you all during public comment. But with one more night, that means $877 million more in visitor spending per year. And that also means directly $852,000 in additional TOT for the city to spend towards its priorities and also a local tax revenue beyond just TOT, sales tax, other revenue, and then the visitor spend of $33.7 million. So that concludes the overview of the TID and the renewal and brings us back to the staff recommendation, which is to adopt the three resolutions presented to you this evening. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Nat, for the wonderful presentation. Are there any questions from the council? All right, let's go ahead and just take it out to for public comment, and then they can bring it back to the council for deliberation. So I'll pass it over to you, Clementine.
Let's see, I don't see anybody in the chamber. Here comes, here comes somebody.
That's not somebody, that's just an executive director.
Good evening. My name is John Turner, and I'm the, I'm the general manager of one of the hotels that was mentioned, Intercontinental of the Clement, Monterey. So thank you for naming it. And I'm also the chair of the MCTID Committee, Monterey County Tourism Improvement District. And I also chair the Conference Center Advisory Committee as well. I want to thank the mayor, and I also want to thank the council for affording me the time to speak. This has been a process that has, that has taken approximately 18 months to get to this very important crossroads. And the process, as you can see by the, by the consensus, has really unified the hospitality industry more than ever before. As you know, and as was already aptly elucidated, the tourism economy is the lifeblood for the city of Monterey and all communities within the county of Monterey. To the uninitiated, people may think that because we're such a beautiful destination, that we really don't need to market it, and that tourism is a given. And that is really not true, especially nowadays. We aggressively compete with other amazing destinations, including Napa Valley, Sonoma, Santa Barbara. We don't compete aggressively enough, and that's something that we're trying to remedy. Each of these destinations are getting much more aggressive with their destination marketing. We already talked about the fact that Napa's marketing budget is more than twice, twice per room versus ours. And we are second from the last place. I think the only one that is below us right now is Tahoe. The TID renewal will allow the city of Monterey and the county to be much more successful, which in turn will help us drive increased economic vitality for the city and not just for TOT and TID, but sales tax, jobs, and ultimately the quality of life and vitality for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there anybody else in the chamber?
Yes, hello, I'm Paul Martin. I'm the VP of Finance and Regulatory Affairs for the Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Thank you, Mayor and council, for an opportunity to speak here today. We've been working with Hans and that pretty extensively on financial projections and other matters since COVID started and intend to carry on that sort of financial consultant work. Some would call it wizard work, but we enjoy it. It relates, as it relates particularly to generating and tracking TOT. I think we've been helpful as we have a host of other tools and data analytics that help all of us make better decisions for the destination. One of those tools, and you saw it in your, in your report today from the staff, was a, a report conducted by a company called Tourism Economics. They are world-renowned gold standard data analyst, analyst company for destinations. As you could see in the staff presentation, there is the possibility of driving an incremental $2.2 billion in economic impact over the next decade. That would deliver almost $60 million in incremental TOT for the countywide. And on top of that, there's incremental business revenue, sales tax, and employment, all great things for the economic vitality of the area. And this one can be done without trying to get a lot more tourists here. As, as we've mentioned, we're focused on quality, not quantity. We're focused on attracting visitors who will stay longer, do more, and spend more. Visitors like travelers for meetings and conferences. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm trying not to fog up my glasses. So let's see if we can make this happen. Anyway, good evening, Mayor and council members. Congratulations, Mayor, and and welcome new council members. I'm looking forward to getting you know, getting to know you better than three minutes allows, but I would like to share some important information that reinforces what has already been presented. My name is Rob O'Keefe. I'm the president, CEO of the Convention and Visitors Bureau here, the county. As I've told our board members and others, I've been a CEO since the very beginning of COVID, which means I have been a survivalist CEO, and I'm still here. Now we have an opportunity, all of us, myself included, to be more forward-thinking, forward-looking, to the point where we've created a strategic roadmap. We spent much of the last year with stakeholders across the county, ranging from visionaries like Julie Packard to resident associations to ask their input to create a strategic plan that looks out over the next decade. This is what that's about. The plan and the means to accomplish that plan include necessitate this TID renewal. I won't say it again and again, but I'll say it one more time. We are severely beaten when it comes to competition. I'm going to give you an analogy. One of our board members, Amish Patel, uses to talk about how we stand versus our competition. Not only are we not in the game, we're not in the stands. We're in the parking lot, listening to the game being played by people or destinations like Napa, Sonoma, and others. And we made a decision during that survivalist mode that we've all been in because we saw what COVID did to all of us. It forced us to look at what innovation can accomplish to get through COVID. We wanted to hang on to that innovative spirit and build beyond that and come out of COVID better than we went in before. So we created a strategic plan, and the TID is part of that plan. And the goal is to come out of COVID better than we went in. We have that roadmap. We have a mechanism to do that with the existing jurisdiction, TOT investment from all our partners. On top of this TID renewal, we have a huge opportunity. There's a lot to that, and there's a lot more to talk about. But one of the things that I would want to leave you with is our goal isn't necessarily to bring a lot more people here. And as Paul had outlined, we don't even need to bring one more person here to be better than we are now in terms of economic impact. As a matter of fact, we want to focus on bringing people from further away, bringing in groups, bringing in international visitors, bringing people without their cars, less traffic congestion, getting them here for one more night. We even have a theme song. If I could have got Phil Collins here tonight to sing it, because he can say it better than I, "One More Night, One More Night."
We can give you three more minutes to sing for us, if you may.
Do you have a disco ball?
Disco ball.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
"One More Night in Monterey."
Okay, here we go.
We broadcast live across everywhere.
We could create an a cappella group out of the, out of the, the room tonight. Put down the next agenda. Do we have anybody else in the chambers?
Maybe not in the chambers. I don't see more people coming forward, but we do have a few on Zoom.
All right. So take that away, Clementine.
The third thing here is Tammy Jennings.
Hi, Tammy.
Hi, I just wanted to find out, I'm trying to understand all this, and it sounds perfect, but the money is going to come from more TOT tax for the for advertising, or where is this money coming from?
So is that the end of your public comment? We'll, we'll make sure we get that answered for you.
Yes, I just want to know how this is all working. So that's my comment. I don't understand. So thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. We'll get that question answered for you.
All right, and next we have, I believe this is Jenny in Chigret.
Yes.
Good evening, Jenny.
Good evening, Mayor and council. "One More Night."
Yes, I think we're on a trend right now.
So for those of you who don't know me, I am the managing director of the Portola Hotel and Spa. I'm a board member for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I'm also on the Monterey, oh my god, Conference Center Advisory Board. You know, is, is, we all know, and we've learned very hard way, that tourism for Monterey County but is, is, is so important, but it's even more critical for the city of Monterey. And the TID renewal have a significant benefit for both groups of meetings in the city. You know, the, the fact that the city runs a conference center and that we came together as a community to make a major investment in renovating the conference center, this renewal is only going to help MCCB promote and sell the conference center more aggressively to attract the valuable group travelers. And, you know, as we've said before in several of these meetings, group travelers spend two to three times more, and the best part is they come here, they don't drive here, they don't get in their cars and make more congestion. They, they have a lighter impact on our destination, and they spend a lot of money that are, you know, even over and above what leisure travelers do. I was part of a task force to develop the 10-year strategic road plan, roadmap for the CVB and our destination and to increase the TID, which is being funded through the hotels, has an enormous opportunity, and this renewal will help drive it. The best part about it is I've been in this community since 1990. The best part about it is I've been in this community since 1998 in the hospitality industry, representing not only our hotel, but I, you know, have worked for other hotels in the in the area. And it's this is all about all of us coming together and realizing the value of what is in front of us and and wanting to make sure that Monterey stays front and center with the travelers, not only group travelers, but international travelers. And this is just extremely important that we continue to support it and support our number one industry in the city of Monterey. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, Mr. Mayor, I do not see more comments.
Beautiful. Thank you so much for the public comments, and, you know, I just want to reaffirm that this is some good stuff, and I appreciate everybody reaching out to help support and bring this to fruition. It seems like we're we're not only continuing it, but we're expanding it, and I think it really is in alignment with what I hear from our neighbors in regards to helping to reduce the impacts to our communities by targeting certain groups. And so what was ringing true to me is the need for extending the stays, not increasing. That's really exciting to hear that opportunity. Let's open it up to the council for deliberation, and who wants to go first?
I see Alan's hand is up.
Yeah, Councilmember Hoffa, let's pass it to you.
Well, yeah, I'm I'm very supportive of this, you know. The reality is, no matter how good your product is, or no matter how amazing your destination is, if people don't know about it, they're not going to take advantage of it. And so, marketing really makes a big difference. And you could see from the graph that we are behind the eight ball in terms of competing with other destinations. So I'm very supportive of that, and when we raise more, when we have more more visitors, that's going to mean more revenue, which means better services. I also, as you've mentioned, Mayor, really appreciate the fact that I think our hospitality partners appreciate that we need to have increased visitors or extended stay of visitors in a way that doesn't negatively impact residents. I think that they get that. I think the idea of one more day in Monterey speaks to that as opposed to having, you know, another 10,000 cars during Car Week, or another, you know, 10,000 cars during the AT&T. So that's good to hear. Finally, I think to the to the caller, this isn't going to reduce our our revenues. It potentially could increase it, but it's not like this is coming out of the TOT. This is an additional fee that is, you know, assessed on top of other fees and taxes. So I think this is a win-win. The fact that our hospitality partners in the city of Monterey are behind this for me makes this a pretty easy yes.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Alan. I do want to pass it to staff. I agree with you. This is a fee not unrelated to our TOT, but if I can just pass it to staff to reaffirm that for us, please.
Yes, I can explain. The way that this works is it is, as Cosmo Rahafa said, separate from from the city's TOT contribution towards destination marketing, which is part of a separate formula, and we can discuss further as part of the budget. This is a simply an assessment on hotel properties that they pass on to the guest, and it's based on a per-room night. So there are no city funds involved with this assessment. It is truly a self-assessment passed on to the hotel guest.
Perfect. Thanks for clarifying that for us, Nat. I will pass it to Councilmember Barber.
Yeah, I definitely concur with Alan of what he was talking about. First, I just want to just say that I just take my hat off and really am impressed in supporting our tourism. Excuse me, I've got laryngitis and it's going down further and further. But I really want to take my hat off and take this time to really thank tourism and our hospitality during this time. I know it was hard going through COVID, and I really want to applaud you coming together collectively to know how to increase it and to sustain it. And I think that's important when we go through different types of emergencies as a city to be able to learn from it. And I really applaud what you're doing by understanding not only the TOT pieces that are already there, but understanding, just like Alan was saying, the TID, and understanding that the marketing is really important now, especially in hospitality, because everyone's fighting for those dollars, because all of hospitality in the US is trying to make up for it. So everyone's trying to market. So it would move us to move forward by being able to catch up with the race. So thank you for that.
When you make a good point there, too. I mean, I wonder even beyond just the US, what that competition looks like from an international perspective as well. Ed, did you want to go ahead and jump in?
Yeah, I just wanted to to highlight. Thank you very much for the presentation, and Kim has addressed it to thank the hospitality partners. I served this council on the Convention and Visitors Bureau and have for, I think, the last eight years. And I just wanted to highlight the significance of this. Ms. Jennings called in and asked a question, and I think it's been addressed, but I wanted to say that the previous rate was a dollar, a dollar a room per night. So this is a significant way to recalculate and also add to a program that's been around for a long time, but we have been falling falling further and further behind our competitors, as it's already been pointed out. So this is a significant positive move to get over eighty percent of the hotel property owners to vote to do this. Well, one would say, well, why would they want to put an assessment on every hotel folio when someone checks out the next morning? It's because they have confidence in their product. They have confidence in our Monterey County as a destination, and they have confidence that they know that the enhanced dollars through this enhanced TID throughout the county will enable us to be competitive and win stronger bids, negotiations, customer base that come and stay, do conventions at the Hyatt, the Marriott, the Intercontinental, the Plaza, the Portola, and of course, it's all about us partnering and being in a position to have folks come and stay in our convention right downtown at the Monterey Convention Center, which we have so greatly invested with the community. And this is sort of the the phase three piece that is upping our game. We invested in a location. We, I think it's a beautiful site. We've gotten some great responses, and then we got hit with COVID. Now we need to fully get to a point where we can maximize the conference center and Monterey as a destination for the convention convention and and visitors that come here and get that extra day or two. Now, coupled with that, what the Convention and Visitors Bureau has done is actively pursued that marketing already and the partnership with United, Alaska, additional ways to get to Monterey to enjoy conferences and the tourists to come and stay. So this is a great thing. When it started off, the question was, well, what kind of a response will we get from the hotel owners? And the the answer now is is buried in the presentation. Above eighty percent. That's fantastic. So I'll stop saying or stop talking. The platitudes need to go out to our city staff as well because this requires a lot of work to make this work and push forward a new system. But this enhances and positions the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Monterey County to be in a position to really move forward, and as Rob said, to be better than it was before COVID. And thank you all for your presentations tonight. Thank you for staff for working on this. And this this really is a, as our mayor said, a beautiful thing, and it's good stuff. So totally support it.
Thank you for your comments. Now I'll pass it to Councilmember Garcia, and and I'll just let you know, I don't know how comfortable you feel with this this process, so I'll share. You don't have to speak if you don't want to. You don't need to start a trend, but if you if you have comments, you're more than welcome to to tune in at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that because it could be a little scary to be here for the first time, so I appreciate that. But yeah, no, I I'm very, I I really enjoyed the information that I'm hearing, and I'm going to keep it short and sweet. I think it's a great great work in terms of not trying to reinvent the wheel, but just maximizing the channels that are already in place to continue to increase those channels of revenue that we might see. So, great job and full support. Thank you.
Beautiful. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion, if I could.
All right. Is there a second?
Make the motion that we support the staff's recommendation to move forward with the, I've got to get this legally correct, and Chrissy, you'll correct me if I'm off, that we are moving ahead to start Monterey County Tourism Improvement District, MCTID, to levy an assessment on lodging and business within the districts and moving forward on the timetable as outlined in the agenda.
I'll second that.
The, I'm sorry, my mic wasn't off, but also we're approving the policy and procedure.
All the guidelines.
Yeah.
And also that we are approving the policy and guidelines outlined in the agenda.
Beautiful. I heard a second by Councilmember Hoffa. Any other discussion? Right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Hi.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson?
And that's a yes for me. So got an unanimous vote there. Again, appreciation to our business partners for taking lead on this, and we look forward to working with you as we move forward. And then next, we'll be going to the Measure P, Measure S agenda item. And who am I passing it to here? Am I passing it to you, Nat?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Tyler, and this is an annual report that our city staff provides on the Measure P and S. These are, Measure P and S are special sales tax, and the report is on the conformity with requirement that expenditures be used exclusively for the rehabilitation, repair, and improvement of city streets, sidewalks, and storm drains. Apologize for the typo there, and disabled access improvements. So Measure P and S, many, some of you may know or may recall that prior to 2014, Monterey's street sidewalks, roadways were in such disrepair. The pavement condition index was at a risk level that was classified as at-risk, just fifty-three. And Monterey voters in 2014 approved Measure P, which was a one percent sales tax to address deferred maintenance for street sidewalks, potholes, storm drain maintenance, and disabled access and safety improvements. In November of 2018, Monterey voters, eighty-two percent of Monterey voters, supported Measure S, which essentially continues Measure P. That that is so critical to the pavement condition index going from fifty-three to where it stands today as of June 2022, which is rated at sixty-nine, a good rating. And that is a testament to voters' willingness to support the funding of city streets and infrastructure. Without Measure S and and which is the continuation of Measure P, it is, the city would have to spend general fund dollars towards pavement and storm drain maintenance and other projects, and that also means less funding for fire, police, parks, and other programs that the city provides. So with that, I'm going to hand this off to our Assistant Finance Director Stella Sandoval, who has a few slides to share with us this evening. And also, while we get the the slide shared to work, also wanted to recognize all of the members of the Measure P and S Oversight Committee, including Carol Shrubagian, who's here in the audience with us this evening.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Williamson. My name is Stella Sandoval. I'm with the, I'm the Assistant Finance Director at the Finance Department. I'm here on Raffella's behalf as her proxy tonight. And I believe the presentation, which is currently being loaded, is something that has been presented to the council in the past. So we are building on prior year and just adding a status now for the end of fiscal year, June thirtieth, 2022.
Okay, I'm getting ready to share the screen here. Bear with me for just one moment. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, and as Nat was mentioning, prior to 2014, the condition of the streets, I think most of us in the city are aware. The city needed a new funding source to make that happen. We passed the initial Measure P at one percent, and that was in 2014. Let's go ahead and move to the next slide, please. Are you moving it, Nat?
Yes. This is the next slide. Yep.
And this is just repeating again what Nat has already covered, but in November. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thanks so much.
That's okay. So here, again, we're repeating prior history, but we're really focusing now on the FY twenty-one, twenty-two column, which is in blue. And it says unaudited because we are still currently going through our annual audit for June thirtieth, 2022. The sales tax revenue at one percent came in at eleven million four hundred fifty-three thousand, and the interest earned on that for the year was eighty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty, that total of eleven million and a half approximately. And then we moved down to the expenditures, which are broken down by the different categories of the improvements. Storm drains at a hundred and thirty thousand, sidewalks eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, pavement at five million six hundred and eighty-five thousand, and ADA improvements at six hundred and eight thousand, and I'm rounding those numbers. The total expenditures for the year FY twenty-one, twenty-two were seven million two hundred and forty-six thousand. So that means that our revenue did outpace the expenditures for the year, giving us four million two hundred and ninety-five thousand three hundred and twenty-five, which will roll into the fund balance to be used for future years. And then the last column shows the total since the beginning of the measure passing. And we can go to the next slide. Thank you. And so again, here we are looking at the previous year's history, but really, we're going to focus on the FY twenty-one, twenty-two year-to-date. And in the subsequent columns, the two columns to the right, we have the change in dollars, and then we have the change shown as a percentage of the prior year. So to reiterate the same numbers that we just covered in the previous slide, our total revenue of eleven million five hundred and forty-one thousand six eighty-nine was two million eight hundred and eighteen thousand more than the prior fiscal year, and that amounts to thirty-two percent increase from the prior year, 2021, when we were coming out of the COVID recovery. And for our expenditures, the seven million two hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and sixty total was less than the prior year. So we actually saved, or we spent less in the expenditures than the prior year by fifteen percent, and that's a million two hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred and eighty-two. So the net of the increase in revenue and the savings in the expenditures compared to the prior year is four million ninety-two hundred and eighty-seven, and that percentage just looks fantastic when you see the one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five percent compared to the net of the 2021 of only two hundred and five thousand. So in the prior year, So in the prior year, we did also have more revenue than expenditures. But that margin was much closer with only 205,000 of a difference in savings for the prior year. And we can move on to the next. Thank you. And so this is just a summary of where we kind of are now, still looking at our COVID recovery. The adopted budget for revenues for 2122 was 11 million, close to 11.1 million. The actual revenues that we received were slightly above, coming in at 11,453,238. And that was just a 4% increase in the revenue from what we had actually projected for the budget. So pretty close. The projected revenues for our current fiscal year, which we are in now, 2223, are 11,289,000. So a little bit more optimistic than the prior year. And currently year to date, the city has already received 3,156,731 of the sales tax, which is reported. And that sales tax so far, we have received July, August and September. So three of the 12 months have been received. And just a note to remember that the state does pay the sales tax after two months. So there is a little bit of a lag between the sales tax being reported and paid to the state. And then them turning around and paying that revenue to us directly. So our revenues currently are at 27.9% of our budget, which definitely puts us on target to meet the projections for the year. And lastly, delivering on the city's promise to fix the streets. Funding for Measure P and S is vital to improving the condition of the streets. I think we all recognize that. Prior to the Measure P, the city's average PCI compliant, sorry, PCI was 53%, which is an at-risk level. And we continue to see improvements as of the end of June 30th, June 30th, 22. We were rated at 69%, which is considered good. And the city is proud to deliver on its promise to fix the city's streets and infrastructures. And appreciates its citizen's support on this crucial funding source. And with that, I'll take any questions if there are any regarding the presentation.
Thank you very much Stella. And I do want to add that in addition to this being a very heavy lift from on the finance team. It's also a partnership with the Public Works Department as well, that actually have the engineers to implement the projects. And make, utilize the funding through Measure P, Measure S. So in addition to Stella Sandoval here from Finance, we also have Tom Hardy, who is our city engineer. Who's here virtually to answer any questions as well as our Public Works Director Andrea Rennie. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Beautiful. Thanks, Steph. Thank you Stella for the presentation. If I could just go ahead and start us off. I saw that the score, the PCI score of 69 was provided in June of 2022. When do we expect to get an update, updated score?
Answer that, Mr. Mayor. The score continues to change. The pavement decreases its structural stability, I guess, decreases over time. So at the current date in December of this year, we ran the report again, keep an ongoing tally. And it slipped down to 68. So we'll be looking forward to getting it back up. We're trying to get to 75. But we'll be looking to improve with our projects that come up in the spring and next year.
Beautiful. And then this might be a question for Stella. How are we doing overall in regards to where we anticipated being? I know that your, in your presentation, we, we saw how the impacts of COVID. Changed where we were, but what does that look like in regards to the estimates that we had from the beginning of Measure S?
All the way back to the beginning of Measure S?
That's correct. How are we doing? Just I guess in general in regards to what our assumptions were.
Um, you know, I don't know the answer to that, Mayor, off the top of my head. Just getting kind of drawn into this today. So I would have to go back and get that information for you, bring it back.
No worries. It would be helpful to just have a good sense of how we're doing compared to what our assumptions were. But that's it for me. I'll pass it to the rest of the council. So who would like to follow up with any questions here?
I have a comment, but I'll wait.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm not seeing any questions. So let's go ahead and take it to the public. Pass it to you Clementine.
Take this off. Good evening. My name is Carol Shrubagian. I chair the Measure P and S Oversight Committee. A couple of things. Just as an aside, if we're starting the singing group, you have one more night and we have our theme song is Stand By Your Band. So we could have the combination. But we'll make a great team. We could get all kinds of theme songs for Monterey. We have, when you look, and I think you've gotten the report like we do, the segments that have been repaired. And the, and the PCI in those segments. We were told in the beginning by Public Works that a lot of them, and I know my street and a bunch of them, you look at them slurry sealed. And slurry seal, they always repair rather than replace. So, but slurry seal has a life cycle of about six years. So we're coming, if there's some slippage, you're going to see that some of these streets that were done in the beginning are going to have to be done again. And again, they're in a shape that they could be slurry sealed. It's more cost effective. And if you want to take a look at it, we've asked now to put dates on when this work was done. So we can tell, we'll see, oh yeah, this is getting to the end of the life cycle of this street segment. But we know also that there are, as we know, more street segments that are much lower PCI that still need to be done. So there, Public Works is balancing it really well to get it done in, in the way that it, you know, so that everything stays. It's increasing the PCI and yet getting the streets. And some of the people are like, well, why isn't my street done yet? And I know you've heard that from people. The other thing too, is we have to recognize, yes, during COVID, the collection went down. And just to reiterate, group business, it went down at the point when this conference center was closed as well. Because food and beverage, group food and beverage and rentals, the AV and everything is all taxed. So when we have the lack of group business, you end up within a situation where the sales tax collection is lower. So again, it's important that we have the right groups spending the right money, leaving their money here. You know, flying in, flying out, leaving their money here and making it better for all the residents in Monterey. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Carol. And I appreciate your leadership on the Measure P, Measure S Committee. And it's helpful to hear that perspective. I think having that additional information will be helpful. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do not see any further comments, anyone coming to speak in person or on Zoom.
Awesome. Thanks Clementine. We'll bring it back to the council for comment and deliberation. And Councilmember Hoffa.
Yeah, I just wanted to share. So in 2014, when we passed the initial Measure P, we were anticipating and, you know. Prognosticating that maybe we'd make eight million a year. And I think from the beginning, we made, we generated more than that. And it's just great to see that, you know, now 11 and a half million, you know, that's, it's amazing. Because that's just extra money that we have to make our city's streets and sidewalks safer and better for everyone. And again, for the new council members to put it in perspective, before we pass Measure P. I think we had about a million dollars a year approximately in, in funding, which came from the state gas tax money. So you know, there's gas tax money. We get our, we get a certain percentage back from the state. And it was about, I want to say 900,000, maybe a million a year. Now we're spending upwards of 10, 11 million dollars a year, you know, that's huge. And just think of how far behind we would be in terms of the quality of our roads and our sidewalks, had we not done that. And the sidewalks are really important too. First of all, for public safety, public access, you know, for folks who are disability challenged. And also in terms of protecting the city, we had a lot of trip and fall accidents where the city would be sued because sidewalks were uneven, whatever. And so it's, this has really been a very successful program. I want to thank the staff and, and also our partners for all of the good work that's been happening.
Thanks, Alan. Well said. Anybody else in the council?
Mayor, I'm not sure if you can see. You see that part?
I, yeah, I know. I, I saw that. It looked like you were about to do a Superman and fly away, but. On to you, Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of additional comments and, and all exactly right. This, this was a monumental decision that the citizens made and it was an overwhelming vote of support. Measure S was. And the talk of the town, when we went from P to S was, okay, P, we proved it. You can trust us now. And the citizens voted and said, okay, well, we will trust you and, and we want to get our roads fixed. We want to get our ADA fixed. We want our sewer drains repaired as well, but we'll go longer and we'll, we'll vote for this to see how it's doing. So it was a case of, we needed to prove and we needed to show that we could do this. And so kudos to those that voted for this and supported this and for their patience waiting for their street to get fixed. And whether it's 68 or 69 on the PCI, we know it's going to grow a bit because we're going to keep this going. We have several years to go forward to do this. But this truly is an ongoing project that any city government has to maintain. Their streets, their sidewalks, their, their sewer drains, their ADA, because every time you touch it, you have to fix the ADA. So we are truly bringing our community back stronger, healthier for our transportation system. So we need to keep that up. The other thing is, we were able to do this with the support of all the voters. And in addition, after Measure S was Measure X, which was a Monterey County Regional Transportation Tax. That is making huge leaps and bounds on the same level for large regional, and that's the self-help effort. So with P and S and then later Measure X, it was, it was passed overwhelmingly. Well, I can't say overwhelmingly in the, in the low 60s, but it passed. So we're seeing some regional projects get fixed too, and getting grants that are matching. So that's been a great one-two punch. We're still under the state maximum for sales tax. So that is a great thing. So I, I think that this is a very good report, good status report, good to look at it. I think Carol and your Oversight Board, with your suggestions, those are great suggestions as we expand. So that we can look forward to seeing the tracking piece and then being mindful of the slurry that would be. You know, three, four, five years old and how that's going to play into the future decisions. So I think those are, those are great suggestions, but good work by all. And thank you for the hard work that our city engineers, our city staff. Those that have to count and keep track of the money. Thank you Stella. Good report. Appreciate all the efforts to, to make sure that this works. And looking back, knowing that, you know, we were looking at mid 50s. And now we're chasing 70 and beyond in the PCI. And it's kind of like if you took a class from Professor Hoffa. And the first time you took it, you probably made it four weeks and you didn't even stay long enough to get an F, but you were asked to leave because your grade was so poor. Now you're asked to sit in the front row and you've got a really good chance of getting an A+. So big difference, big movement. And these numbers don't equate to a, an F or an A in the scores, completely different terms. So if you're trying to figure out, well, what would be an A, we're really close to an A if we get into the 70s. So spectacular progress. Thank you.
Beautiful. And anybody else like to go?
Yeah, I'll say briefly, just to piggyback on. The, just being appreciative of everyone who's. Worked on this and who voted for this and city staff who has done tremendous work and very. Smooth work, I should say. I, I think about the, the days that my street in front of my house got redone. And it was a well-oiled machine. I mean, it was, it came in, blocked all the parking, did what they had to do and moved on to the next, next street. So great job for city staff as well. No, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Barber. Nope. Okay. No, perfect. Thank you. You know, I'll throw in one last thought here, and I don't want to take away from the work being done around Measure P and Measure S. I know that's very specific in regards to the use of those funds, but I think it's worthy for us to have a deeper conversation around. The pedestrian and bicycle friendly nature side of this transportation conversation. I know that the funding that's used for Measure P and Measure S for the sidewalks are mainly focused on the ADA. Requirements and, and that should and needs to be a priority. But I think that there's other efforts in regards to creating more sidewalks in the city where there's areas that there should be sidewalks. And as a bicyclist myself, and I know that a couple of other council members are as well. I think it's fair to say that there's, it's not a very friendly community. People often refer to the rec trail to try to check the box as far as being bike friendly. And that's just not the case when you're talking about local commuters and trying to get around. So I think we need to have a deeper conversation around how to prioritize that within the city of Monterey.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve. And I also second what you just said, Mr. Mayor. I think it would be great to have that conversation.
And Councilmember Hoffa.
And if I may, I'll second the motion.
Perfect. And do we need, are we just making a motion to accept the report? Is that, is that appropriate, Steph?
Yes, that is appropriate, Mayor Tyler.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Thank you. Any final comments before we go for a roll call vote? All right, to you Clementine.
All right, Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson?
And that's a yes for me.
Right.
So it's a unanimous vote. Thank you, everybody, for the work being done on this. It's very much appreciated by our community. So kudos to everybody involved. Alrighty, let me try to find a way here on the agenda. And now I believe we're going to item number 14, which is the appointments for 2023 representatives to outside agencies and city committees. So I'll pass it to staff for a brief presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Tyler and members of the city council. As many of you know, there are appointments made to outside agencies and city committees. There are some that are appointed by council. And some that are appointed externally and some that are city committees appointed by council. The spreadsheet and Clementine has shared her screen with a blank slate showing all of the agencies. Because we do have essentially two new council members. It, we felt, and the best protocol would be to start, start here. We also have attached the assignments from last year, which we can refer to as well. And it's the pleasure of the mayor in terms of how, and the council, the process. We can go through each agency one by one and start to, start to fill out the sheet live here. If, if that's the will of the council and mayor.
Okay, what, what I would like to do, if, if it's okay with the council, is to start us off by giving a proposal. And then we can go from there. So what I'm thinking is. Councilmember Hoffa and Smith, if they can just retain the appointments that they had. I would take over the appointments that. The previous mayor Clyde had. And then Kim can take over Dan's and Gino can take over mine. And so that's just a general idea with a few slight edits. So a thought would be to give. Tim, the cannery robe. Tim, the Canary Road Business District, as opposed to Gino, since that's in her district. The Laguna Grande Regional Park Joint Powers. I would say to give that instead of to. It was previously the the current, the the previous mayor. I would give that to Gino, since that's in his district as well. That's part of his district. And then I could be the alternate to that. And then for Monterey One Water. Since I've been serving on that, there's there's pretty much four large outside agencies. And so because I've been working on that, I would propose keeping that. And it shows Alan as my alternate, so I don't think we need to make any changes there. And then the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. The Policy Advisory Committee. I could retain that. And then the other big thing. Was. Our previous council member, Dan Albert, had both Monterey Salinas Transit and Monterey, I'm sorry. And and the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, also currently known as Regen. And so as opposed to Kim having both of those outside agencies. Oh, I'm sorry. Clementine, I see your hand is up.
I have what I think might be the chart you're talking about. If if your recommendations are similar to what I heard about, and I don't know if that would be helpful for me to show it on the screen.
Yeah, actually, that would be super wonderful if you could. Thank you for. For that.
If something here needs to be changed from what you just said, though, it was a little hard to follow with the discussion.
No, I mean, as long as this is what. Was provided to staff, I think that we are on a good track. Let me just kind of take a quick look at it here.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So you're you're going through what you're recommending. But there's there's one thing that I haven't had a chance to. Discuss with you. Was that? There's one of these board assignments that I would like to. Step off of. And I have a particular interest in picking something else up because of my. Changes in some of my assignments I have with. Executive Tamsi, because I'm rotating off of the executive board. But would like to stay on Tamsi. But the Association Monterey Bay Area Governments is a Wednesday night, and that is continually causing me some conflicts. My previous. Commitment I had on Wednesday mornings, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, midday, morning and midday. I'm now open, so I would be available for the seaside groundwater basin. But I'm not available for the Ambag at night, so I just want to put that out there. Because as you're going through and we're considering things that. Kim and Gino might be interested in. I wanted to put the Ambag on the table.
Okay, can we take a look at the recommendations first, and then we can maybe look at moving from there? So why don't we just give everybody a second? Councilmember Hoffa, why don't you jump in with your thoughts?
Yeah, first of all. I I think your general concept's a really good one, so then I think it's just a question of each of us looking and seeing. If the time for those kind of proposed meetings work. So for me, I would love to be on MSD because I really care about transit. Unfortunately, I almost always have a class at that time, so I don't think I could do that. So I I if somebody else were interested in that and were available, then. That that would be great. I would be interested in moving from the alternate to the primary for Ambag. That's something I can do, and. Before Ed did that, I I was on Ambag. So those would be a couple of things I would offer, but I don't think I can do MST. The other thing I wanted to bring up is Central Coast Community Energy. I believe in talking to staff that Monterey may have an opportunity to appoint an alternate. I think it's. Carmel's year to appoint the primary. I I did serve as the primary for the first couple of years, and I would be open to being the alternate for that. It's a very complicated committee. With a lot of different board members from almost four or five different counties. But anyway, those are my thoughts.
Okay. So it sounds like the two comments from both of you. Might work out if you switch Ambag and MST.
Yeah.
Does that does that seem agreeable to both of you?
Well. I'd like.
Unless somebody else is interested in MST too.
Yeah, I'd like to hear if Kim or Gina would be interested in MST.
So and just to be clear. So it looks like. I'm having trouble reading this, but give me one second.
So I'm I'm fine. I'm not. I don't have any particular interest in MST. Not that I'm not interested in it, but I'm I'm okay not to have it. I really do want to. Make sure that seaside groundwater basin, I want to make sure I have that, and I can make it work in my schedule. Especially being in the sea, the seaside area with with my job, that will definitely work.
Okay, so we have, and I I don't know why I'm thinking of this differently than what's here, but there's Ambag. There's Monterey One. MST. And Regen. Was there a fifth one that had a stipend associated with it?
Yes, Mayor Williamson, there's it's on the second page, but it is an outside agency that's appointed externally. This is the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. Board of Directors, which has a hundred and thirty-five dollar per meeting stipend. That's a selection committee that's comprised of the mayors of each city within Monterey County. They appoint an individual to this seat, so this isn't a situation where the city is guaranteed a representative, or we don't make an appointment in that case.
Okay. So what I hear is that Alan's willing to take on Ambag and replace a view, Ed. I'm not sure if. Gino.
We'd want an alternate if anybody could could do it too.
I'd. I'd be willing to do an alternate if Gino or Kim aren't interested in doing that.
I think, I mean, I I really like your selections. Which I I think are actually selections that I had already scoped out. So.
Very good.
And those, that would be great.
So it it looks like at this point. We've just replaced Ed. On Ambag with Alan. And so that leaves us open with MST. Unless Alan keeps that. But it sounds like he's not interested in keeping it, so.
Well, I would be. I just can't. I just know I'm going to be teaching at that time, and that's something I I can't get out of.
Okay, so. Gino, I I mean. Either Ed or or Gino, I'm assuming. Might be good. I mean, I'm just thinking you, Ed, as as replacing your appointment on Ambag. But if that doesn't work, then maybe we can offer that to Gino, since he doesn't look like he's taking an outside agency that has a stipend. Not that that's a requirement, but just kind of looking at trying to even out those larger. Agency roles that that we have. So I I I leave it to you, Ed, to decide whether or not that's something that you want to take on.
So let me freelance here a little bit. No, I I think MST would be would be fine for me not to take. Because I I do have. It's still working, so I need to be, I actually need to be there working once in a while. What I do have in time. I want to just say that, you know, the water is something that I've been, you know, tracking and. Went to the PUC and went to the Water Resources and. Have gone to the Coastal Commission hearings and have been on this council for eight years and have been talking about. Seeing us get sustainable water for the future so we can have housing. So I I feel like the seaside. Water basin is something that plays right into my experience. So would be interested in that, but MST, if somebody else wants to take that, that would be fine for me. Luckily, my my schedule and the balance and freeing up Ambag and then also stepping off of the the Tamsi exec. That frees up more time, so that's why I was looking at the seaside groundwater. Basin Water Master, because it's right right in keeping with what I've. Been doing the last eight years, talking about trying to get water so we can get housing.
And so for me, that's really important because that was my platform, and that's where I started in helping the students with housing with the water connection. And right in the right in the backyard with CSMB, so I'm. I really would rather keep that where it is.
So so let me try to. Close out some holes that we have here. For the MST board, which meets on the second Monday of every month at ten AM. Gino, would that be something that you might be able to work out in your schedule? I know we're we're so I'm just going to use this opportunity to also share that, particularly for the public, we now have a council that's a majority working class. So these daytime meetings are going to be a challenge for us to try to make things work. But I don't want to cut you off there, Gina. I want you to contemplate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that's also my case. I'm fully employed, and it so happens that Monday mornings are really when. When I have those meetings that really lay out the work for the week. So and it's multiple meetings on on every Monday. Any other day. Gladly do it, but I think this will be especially challenging for me.
So, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I don't want to take this to a vote, but it sounds like. I've heard Alan say that he kind of likes what you've plugged in here. Kim has expressed a strong interest in the seaside groundwater basin. Board of Directors, Gino's got conflicts. In the spirit of compromise, it seems like what this means is I should accommodate and take the MST. Board of Directors meeting. And until such time as maybe something changes with. Gino's.
And I could be your I could be your alternate. I I at least in the spring, I teach at eleven. I don't teach at ten in the spring. So I could be your alternate if you're willing to be the primary. Yeah, as long as maybe between the two of us, we can work it out.
As long as you give me a passing grade.
Always.
Yeah, so Mayor, I think the MST, I I would take that. And groundwater. If I could, if I could be the alternate for Kim. I would appreciate that.
I think I I'd appreciate being the alternate for Kim on the seaside groundwater basin, particularly because of. My involvement with water intimately over the last four years, particularly with Monterey One. I think it's. That knowledge base is just really helpful towards that. So I think. I I but I appreciate you stepping forward to fill in the gap with MST. So I I would just ask everybody to do a quick review and see if there's anything that's not in alignment or that doesn't work with your schedule. With where we're at with it.
Can you just push down a little bit? I think I had one more that I couldn't see that I'm an alternate on. Okay, thank you. I just needed to see the date on there. All right, thank you.
So I've got I've got a question.
Yep, and let me just clarify one thing. One of the things that I tried to do with this too was it really looks at. Right, Ed is on the old Monterey Business Association, which he was already doing, but it makes sense as he continues that because he's the District Two representative. Which downtown falls into. Gino is on the new Monterey Business Association, since. He is the district not, he's not the district four representative, but he lives in district four, so it seems like that would kind of naturally make sense. So I try to make that alignment with with the changes that we see here. So that's what I wanted to share. Go ahead, Ed.
So I just had a question. Are you in a conflict if you're serving on both of those boards with seaside groundwater? And M one? Does that present a conflict for you?
Actually, this was a conversation that came up because Mayor Carbone was sitting on both, and she was participating in in the conversations.
Okay, so yeah, so you resolved that. You don't think it is.
That's correct.
Okay.
If you could just give me one more second here. I'm trying to finish looking through this myself.
I think this looks pretty good. The only question I have for staff is, do we want to address? Central Coast Community Energy, or is that something we'll do next month, or what? Did I misunderstand the memo?
Well, could I just offer, maybe we put you in there as the alternate now, and that way, if it does come down to Monterey getting that, we don't have to bring the conversation back. Is that is that appropriate, Steph?
Actually, if I could clarify, you do have it. So this next, so twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, Monterey has the alternate spots on both. One of them is the elected spot, and the other would be Mr. Uslar. Which board? So it's the policy board is is for council.
And can you help us out and say, when do they meet? Because I can't read this.
So they meet three times a year and as otherwise scheduled at nine AM.
And when do they normally meet, Alan? Do you remember what day?
I kind of think it was Thursday, but I can't remember if it was Tuesday or Thursday. I I don't remember.
The other thing I wanted to point out too, after you look at these, is there are a few city agents, city committees that are also appointed by council, but I don't know, since it's on a different page, you might want to look at that separately.
Yeah, let's go ahead and go to the second page if everybody's good with the first page.
Just can't read this. This is so.
Selection Committee, Monterey County. Visitors Bureau. Management District.
I'll try zooming it in too. It's a little zoom.
Got it on the backside.
Okay.
So in my understanding, so like the ones that I see. For like Ed has Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And Mayor Williamson has the City Selection Committee, so is there just an opening for the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District? Am I reading that correctly?
So I think that the Monterey, I think the Water Management District is the one that. That Nat was speaking to earlier, so I think it's the mayor's group that decides who builds that.
Okay.
Build it. Okay, I think it's appropriate for that to stay vacant until it's determined otherwise.
Sure. Okay, I just was trying to read it correctly. Thank you.
This whole then, this whole section is here for reference, but these appointments are made by other agencies, so. So we've listed people who will be serving in those roles that we know of, but the council doesn't make these appointments in this top section.
Perfect. And that, and then I think. The previous mayor was on the NCIP Committee, and so I think it might be appropriate for me to stay on that. And then so it seems like the only one that we're we're. And then, so it seems like the only one that we're, we're not sure about is the Monterey Conference Center Advisory Board. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Third Thursday or as scheduled, one thirty to three. That's a lot of time. Is anybody particularly interested in that one?
Interested, but I know I don't have the time. Yeah, I was gonna say I'm interested, but my schedule won't allow me.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I could do that one. I, I think I can do that one if, I mean, I certainly would. Would stand aside if somebody else wants to do it, but I, I do believe I can do that.
Yeah, and I think, those are not monthly meetings. I think they're, they're turning out to be quarterly unless somebody else knows.
They, they are on the books as, as monthly, but Customer Member Smith is correct. Sometimes they're canceled for every other month or so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so it doesn't sound like it's gonna be too bad of an assignment for you, Alan. Do you want to have an alternate there just in case? Is that, is that appropriate, staff, for us to do that?
I think it's always good to have an alternate.
I know that there's, I, I know that there's one agency, I think it might be Regen, where you're not even allowed to have an alternate.
That, that's correct, Mayor Williamson. For all the other assignments, we do recommend an alternate.
Okay, yeah. Is anybody interested in being an alternate? I don't mind if nobody else is willing to do it.
Uh, you're talking about the Convention Center Advisory?
The Monterey Conference Center Advisory Board. Okay, I'll go ahead and sign up for that. Any last comments before we finalize this? We'll go out to the public for comments. So at this time, Clementine, I'll pass it to you for public comment. And thank you for controlling the screen there in the back. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so there, there, there was another comment. I wanted to make sure we covered this on the second. Second portion and under city committees appointed by council. Subcommittee on Commission Appointments, City Representative is the mayor per council policy. So previously, we had a council policy that I believe was called the Governance Policy. Right? So that's something I think we need to talk about, because I've heard some council members. Say that they would like to consider having more participation on appointments for. The commission and subcommittees. So we maybe want to talk about that in a future date in terms of what, what approach this council wants to take. Or whether we. We want to have council participation as we have applicants for future dates or future positions as they come up. And do this away.
Absolutely. I, I, I would argue that there is a whole conversation that we could have in regards to appointments to commissions, committees and boards. I, I would, I would ask that maybe we hold off on that tonight, just because there's more elements to it than just who's on that. And, and I think the current, I don't think that. Our decision point tonight is changing the apparatus in regards to how many council members are involved in that. So if, if it's, I, I hear you, and if, and if it's okay, let's bring that back on the agenda at a, at a later date.
Yeah, I, I concur. I think it shouldn't be done tonight, but we should talk about having it and come back. But I think Chrissy was wanting to opine and give us some information.
Sure, I, I could opine now or save it for another night, either way.
Yeah, Chrissy, go, go ahead and, and share your thoughts now.
I was just gonna give the historical context. So before, there used to be a standing committee of the mayor and the vice mayor. And they would interview the candidates for the different boards and commissions. The distinction is that that is a Brown Act body, subject to the noticing and. Public access and, and that type of thing. And so it switched to a committee of one. Which the appointment tonight will be for the mayor, and then a committee of one does not require. Brown Act noticing. And that type of thing. So that's, that's the main distinction between the two.
Okay, perfect. All right, if there's nothing else from the council, let's go ahead and take it out to the public. Please.
Um, Mr. Mayor, we don't have any public comments.
Okay, so let's bring it back to the council for a motion.
Excuse me, I moved to approve.
Go ahead. Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there, okay? All right, any other discussion from the council?
So I'm just, I just wanted to pause this for a second so we can look at the, the lineup and make sure we haven't missed any. And make sure that we've all double-checked and heard properly. It's just, it's hard to see the screen in front of me where, where the initials are, so I'm just verifying to make sure.
So it doesn't all show, so let me know when you want me to scroll and I'll scroll further.
And maybe even, I would, could you zoom in just even a little bit more and then we can just see the top of the page and then we can scroll down to the bottom.
How about that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'm good.
Good, beautiful. Roll call vote, please.
Did we get a second?
Oh. Yes, Dr. Barber.
Oh, okay. Um, Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Williamson.
Yes. Awesome. All right, everybody, thanks for entertaining that. That was a good discussion. Now I'm going to. Look here. So I think next we're gonna go to council comments. Does anybody want to kick us off here?
I just wish everybody, you know, a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and I hope you have a good time with your families and loved ones.
Anybody else? Feel free to just jump in.
I, I did all, I did all the same thing, but I'm gonna make mine short because my voice is going so happy holidays. Stay safe and healthy.
All right, Ed, I heard you starting to jump in there. Go ahead.
Mayor, would, would this be an appropriate time to just kind of give out a few thanks for folks who supported? You know, my application and all the process that took place last week?
Absolutely. This is, the, the council comments is a time to, to, for you to bring up anything you'd like that's not on the agenda. So that would be completely appropriate for this time.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so I just quickly wanted to say thank you to all the folks who. Supported me initially with the signatures that were required to submit the application. To put my name in the hat and. You know, go and present in a, in a very competitive pool with folks who were very. Prepared and capable and, and so I want to thank, thank all those folks who were in their neighborhood at home. Hearing me requesting their signature and I just, you know, I feel very humbled. Were the opportunity and, and really, once, once again, want to thank the council for putting that trust in me in, in. Representing the, the residents of the city of Monterey and, and District Four as well. And a special thanks to that, that special someone who gave me that, that very specific nudge. You know who you are. Thank you so much.
We're glad to have you on the council. Gino, so we look forward to your contributions and we thank you for your service and stepping up to offer that.
Thank you.
Ed, do you want to jump in here?
Yeah, just, it's the end of the year. We'll see each other in twenty twenty-three. So it's been, again, a productive night. Welcome, Dr. Barber. And we wish you a quick recovery for whatever you've got in your throat and let's see you come back soon, healthy and, and even wiser. And Gino, welcome. We had a good conversation Saturday. Appreciate you taking your family time to, to meet and have a cup of coffee and get to know you and. Exchange ideas, so looking forward to, to getting to know more, more about you and, and what you, what you want to accomplish and you as well, Dr. Barber. So just want to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, safe travels. And special holiday pleasantries to city staff. Because I know they get a little extra time at Christmas and the holiday and much deserved. And hopefully everybody will be able to reunite with their families and have a good holiday. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
And I see that, uh, Councilmember Hoffa has brought a furry friend into the camera, so thank you for that. Not to bring more attention to you, but. No, I, I'll continue that messaging. I, I want to wish everybody happy holidays. And Ed, maybe not the last time we'll see everybody. If folks, and, and this is partially a reminder, if folks are planning to attend first night. There, there's a great opportunity for, for folks to get out and, and enjoy the festivities in, in Monterey as we're bringing in the new year together. So that might create an opportunity for some of us to see each other. But for, for, for those that won't be attending, absolutely, we'll see you in, in twenty twenty-three. And I'm just super jazzed to be with you all and, and have this new council and, and anxious and excited to see what we can achieve together. For the entire city. So thank you to, to all the staff for your hard work and wishing you all happy holidays as well. So with that, I will pass it to Nat for City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll keep this brief. We had a very successful Christmas in the Adobes. The other weekend went well, two weekends ago. On Thursday this week, we have a holiday drive-through. This is an annual opportunity to, where our city staff and Recreation Division. Along with a number of volunteers, including the Police Department, Fire, other city employees. Distribute food through the Food Bank of Monterey County. We have over one thousand families registered. To pick up food throughout the day at El Estero Park Center, and they are at capacity. We're also, as, as part of the holiday festivities and holiday activities to those in need. The library continues to host the Food for Fine, so bring canned food to the library and. Fine, library fines will be waived as a result. That runs through the end of the calendar year, so December thirty-first. As Mayor Williamson stated, with First Night Monterey, that is from three PM to midnight. The city is a proud sponsor of First Night Monterey and look forward to seeing you all there. The next regular meeting will be on January seventeenth. We typically, first weekend in January, do not have a regular meeting. So that cancellation notice will be sent out by Clementine soon. And last but not least, on behalf of the entire city staff, we, we wanted to express our gratitude to the city council. For your leadership, your encouragement and your collaboration. We're looking forward to working with you in twenty twenty-three.
Merry Christmas. All right, thank you, Matt. And with that, oh, do we need to go to public comments again for closed session items? Or does what we did earlier account for that?
We, we probably should.
Okay, let's open it up for public comments on closed session agenda items.
No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, beautiful. All right, and with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. And, and the council, we're, we're gonna be getting off of this link and we're gonna be rejoining the closed session link, correct?
That is correct. That should be.
The dates ended already, the close?